Monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. Tonight is Monday, August 19th. First, a second item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Rules of Order. The city council is managed by the Roberts Rules of Order, except for those items that are added at our October, no, we don't, the November Organizational Meeting that's held every year after the election. Item four, Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Minutes from the following meeting, July 15th, 2024, regular meeting.
Move for adoption of the minutes? Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Any? Item five, Presentation of Awards. Is not here, and the other is Brian Smith. I'll read Brian's. Amy's not here, right? Okay. I'll read Brian's, and... Troy, you gonna come get it? "City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Police Officer Brian Smith in recognition of your five years of service in the City of Ellsworth Police Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth presented this day, 19th day of August 2024." And then Amy is, "City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Circulation Librarian Amy Barnes in recognition of your five years of service as a circulation librarian for the Ellsworth Public Library. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth." Thank you to both of you. Item number six, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Chair Beal. Good to be here this evening. I'm gonna try and be somewhat brief, as we have 22 items, I believe, 22 items on the agenda tonight. So, just want a quick update. I know I promised last time around on the courthouse that I'd have an update. We met with the state today at 1:00 PM at a very productive meeting with our state partners about their plans for a new courthouse in Ellsworth. We talked a lot about some of the community concerns, about the Surrey Road property, their openness to alternatives, and their criteria for alternatives. And they are still very much open to alternative options. We're sort of aligning on the next steps right now. But I think, you know, for the groups that we had, I think, a very productive workshop last time around, I want to reschedule one of those for probably mid-September, so we can have another kind of more robust report out about our meetings with our states, progress, timelines, additional community engagement, and sort of outlining what the, how we would proceed with alternative options in terms of requests for proposals, those types of things, just to really increase the cadence between information between the city and our community and the state. So hoping to really iron a lot of that out through our next workshop. I think it was a very productive one last time around, and really looking forward to that piece. Number two on my items is the election papers are now available here at City Hall. We have two city council seats available for this election. Two individuals have thus far submitted their papers. There's also two library trustees. We have one candidate so far, and then a school board member, which we have no candidates yet, but if you are interested in running for city council, running for the school board, or running for a library trustee, please get some signatures and come join us here. It's a great time, as all these councils, I'm sure, will attest to. But really hope to encourage some citizen participation in that process.
When are they due by, Troy?
They are due by, so it's 50, registered voters required to sign your petition. It's due 100 days before, sorry, it's due September 6th by 12:30 PM. So September 6th, 12:30 PM, if you'd like to run for city council, library trustee, or the school board, that is the deadline. You need nomination papers can be grabbed here at City Hall, and they need 50 registered voters to sign them. The next, just a little update on the Riverwalk, which myself and some staff went out to Belfast recently to kind of talk to their city council, the local land conservancy, as well as their equivalent of our Heart of Ellsworth, kind of downtown association, on how they made that project, which was sort of a longstanding dream for Belfast, a reality. It was really, really interesting to see the sort of level of community council, business owner, you know, land trust, and downtown association coordination. In some ways, we have all those exact same elements here in Ellsworth. I think the one other thing we have that's even more going for us to try and make this a reality is, you know, Belfast and Bucksport, you can access their downtowns via boat even without the Riverwalks there, but in Ellsworth, it's currently not exactly a possibility. So to me, it's kind of raised that in my priority list as something we really want to focus on and resource from a staff, council, nonprofit perspective. I'm gonna hopefully have a few more meetings on that, and, you know, and provide updates as the months go on. Another big thing, I think, for the next council meeting, but we're really dialing into the planning for is a one-year infrastructure plan, as those who were involved in our budget process last time around know that we held some things off, especially the road, roads construction that we really felt was more appropriate over a longer-term bonding cycle for consideration, and not putting directly on a one-year taxpayer piece. So we're putting together the local roads plan. It's a real big focus for this, or one of the roads that really need to be maintained over the next year or repaved, and that'll be a big piece. But there's some other pieces of it as well. You know, we're currently spending around $75,000 a year on our water department lease, which is running out, but we also have a very depreciating asset at Pump House Point, which is a city-owned property. So, you know, knowing, using the sort of school piece as a template for if you're trying to get out of just spending money on a lease and trying to invest it more into a long-time property, what would that mean to rehab Pump House Point, or consider other options? But things like the Nolton Park splash pad and other things in Nolton Park, we talked about. We also talked about, you know, the importance of reconciliation getting to this, so I know our finance team is working as fast as they can to get the books reconciled. The 2023 audit is in, it's my last piece on the kind of finances, but there's been a news story on this, we've mentioned it at previous finance committee meetings, but the 2023 audit is out. It did have some findings, many of which I believe we've rectified, including beefing up the staffing in that department, increasing our policies and procedures, and, you know, and making sure that we have our accounts reconciled. We're doing that in a way, and our systems into our budget processes so that they're trackable, and I think we're doing a lot of that now. So it's, but for those who are interested in this, we've also made a bit of a process change. The second Friday of every month, we're doing Big Finance Fridays, as I'm calling them, where we do an analysis of the previous month's finances by departments and on the city as a whole. We talked, it was our first one was last week, and it was helpful. I think we've, you know, we're looking for ways to make that more public, to put it on the website. Obviously, you can review much of the information we discussed on our YouTube channel that catalogs that video, but we want to have, you know, more reports, monthly reports, that are a little more high-level on state of the finances, in addition to a lot more of the granular details. So really continuing to push forward and make sure our finances are as perfectly run as possible. That's it for my report.
Any questions? Counselor?
Could you elaborate a little bit more about the courthouse meeting? Who was there? Where did it happen? Was it Zoom? Was it in person? Who from the city? Who from the state?
Sure. It was here in person, in my office, myself, Patrick, Michelle, and Barbara Cardone, Amy Quinlan, Jeremy, I can't remember his last name, and Tom, or the, so it was four members from the state were involved in the conversation. So, and we, you know, the agenda was pretty much as I discussed. We kind of stated the current plans, how they got here, a little more background on, you know, how we got to this point, and, you know, discussion of their openness to alternatives, which they're definitely very open to. Initial discussions of kind of what their criteria. A lot of this is public information already that we were discussing, but it's one of the pieces we were kind of dialing in on is, you know, there, it was a state, you know, press release from X amount of months ago, and, you know, and a variety of documents. So how do we consolidate that, maybe put together something on the web that can show some of this information that's more helpful? And sort of starting to ideate there, and then outlining timelines and processes for how long this would take for, you know, which is why hence the September, mid-September community meeting. Feels like over the next month, we really need to start deploying some city resources to gather those options together, gather community feedback on alternative locations, and put together, I think to your point in the last meeting, Steve, get some dates on the board for when, you know, you know, when we need to have things by, so that we can get a lot better communication to the city and the community on.
Thank you.
Sure?
It was really helpful for me, a couple of years ago, running for council, to be able to talk to some former council members about just what does it look like, what does it take, time commitment, that sort of thing. So I'm sure some of us, and I for one, would be happy to have people reach out, email, stop by, and ask if they're thinking of running, but maybe they're worried about time commitments or other considerations. I'm always happy to chat about this role, now that I'm two years in and sort of know what I'm doing.
You're an old hand.
Actually, that's, that's great, and I would be more than willing to talk to people, too. I'm sure any of us would be. So, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Item number seven, Committee Reports. Counselors, have any committees they'd like to report out on?
Okay, brief. Department of Recreation, Rec Commission met last month after our last council meeting. A lot of folks have been discussing Nolton Park. Recently, we've gotten some emails as well. We had the Game Time Maintenance Representative, who, Game Time is the company that built the playground that's up there now, stopped by. The broken slides that needed replacement were sort of the impetus for getting somebody out, and fortunately, there was a local, I think it's a local Bangor guy who works for Game Time, was able to come out and do a full inspection, a full itemized list of all of the parts of the playground that were getting close to needing replacement, all the ones that should have been replaced a while ago, and then the prioritization of these are the most dangerous things that you need to replace now. So the Rec Commission's making a plan for replacing the most immediate items, and the entire replacement cost fell somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, which is, you know, fairly reasonable, so the commission's gonna continue to talk about building sort of set-aside fund for maintenance of that park, and maybe some other parks as well. There was some maintenance done and some cleanup done of the splash pad, but it sounds like there's more that needs to be done, so we'll talk about that tomorrow as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number eight, Citizens' Comments. This is the part of the agenda that we welcome people to the podium to speak on something that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we do ask that you wait until that agenda, agenda item is called, and we also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm gonna be quick. Thank you. Thank you for meeting with the state, being willing to look into this for us. We greatly appreciate it, and remember, we're here to help if you need us. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Hi, Lisa LaRue. Also, very grateful you guys are talking with the state. That's wonderful. I'm glad they're listening, hopefully, and not just to us, but to you. I did have a question as to, with all of the information that we had sought as a group from them, the public transcript from the public meeting, all the records they produced, it's very hard to work with no facts, just remembrance of what happened on the meeting, of the public meeting. So I was wondering if you had any luck getting from them the documents that they have denied us under the Freedom Act? If you had any luck with that, or if they had any intention of providing you, the council, especially because if you weren't at the public meeting, or even if you were and you don't have photographic memory, it would be really nice for you to be able to have that transcript, to have the full information, such as, you know, what work they did on the 20 other sites, and specific, they said they had the information about each site, why it wasn't acceptable, and they had their drawings and their engineering. And again, without facts, it's really hard for us, much less you, to move forward, and I think they should give that to you. Did they offer it to you?
Yeah, great.
I don't normally.
You know, yeah, we don't, but I think it's an important one. Yeah, we did talk about data information, some of the things, I think Patrick and both Michelle raised a lot of the community concerns about specific pieces, some of which they could answer, some of which they reference in specific other areas. And I think it became a real kind of focus, I think, for us, is how do we consolidate some of this information? In addition to, you know, whatever the request is on specific pieces of it, there's been lots of information along timeline. I think they've been looking since like 2016 on this process. So how do we kind of address a lot of those concerns and gather that information together, centralize a lot of that in some way?
Some of it may not matter anymore, but I think a copy of the transcript, at least for you, would be a good start, because it would give you an outline of what they said that evening. I mean, you were there, do you remember every word they said? I don't, and some of the stuff they offered up is fact.
Yeah.
I think it would be really prudent on their part to show transparency to the public and to you if we start with a transcript of the meeting and work from there. And we've been asking for that since the day after the meeting, and we have been denied repetitively. And the next step, we don't want to have to force their hand on it, but it's information that would be very useful in moving forward. And if we find an alternative site, then maybe who cares? But until we do, until we have comfort zone in that, we've got to keep pressing forward with the assumption that they're gonna move forward with Surrey Road. Okay? Thank you.
Sure.
Hello, my name is John Stoli. Obviously, a resident of Ellsworth. I live in Westwood Hills, off of Westwood Drive, and I'm here to raise some concerns about the proliferation of Airbnbs in our residential neighborhoods. Living off of Westwood Drive, we have an Airbnb next to us that unfortunately, the owner is breaking the covenant of the deeds of our community, and has chosen to operate an Airbnb, even though the covenant says no businesses strictly residential. The problem is Airbnb's operates businesses under the guise of being residential, and I think we need to have more regulation. They kind of act as unregulated mini hotels, and I'll give you an example of some of the issues. We have spillover light into our other residents in our neighborhood, including, of course, me. The, you know, we have problems already with tourism. It's like bringing tourism into our neighborhoods. I mean, we have enough that we have to deal with tourism in our community, dealing with heavy traffic. Our stores are jam-packed. It's hard to get around the city because of the level of tourism. I have nothing against businesses or tourism. It can be very positive, but there's a lot of issues with this. They drive through our neighborhood very fast. You know, we're 25 mile an hour. We catch them driving 40, 50. We have kids in the neighborhood. It creates a safety issue, and of course, they come in at all hours because they can use the keyless system. And I think it's reducing, it's changing the characteristics of our neighborhood. It's reducing the quality of life of our neighborhood. The other issue is that, in a larger sense, is Airbnb investors, and again, I have nothing wrong with businesses, but I think there's a certain place for them. They are taking up the housing stock that normally might go to families, driving prices up and driving families out of the neighborhood, and that's gonna be a real issue, I think. It's why Bar Harbor and other communities in Maine, and throughout actually many places, have started to regulate and limit the amount of Airbnbs in our community. The homeowner who owns one next to us wanted to buy a second one. We have 25 homes in our neighborhood. That means there would be like two Airbnbs within our small dead-end street. They don't pay any tax to the City of Ellsworth. They're not under inspection. You know, they're really unregulated, and it really alters the characteristics of our neighborhood. And let me give you one warning about this.
I'm sorry, it's, it's three minutes.
Okay. I just want to say one final thing. If we don't have, if we're pricing out families in our neighborhood, then we're not gonna have families to support our public schools, our churches, our civic organizations, all the things that make our place a nice place to live.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Michelle, could you ask him to repeat his name? I couldn't catch it in time.
Sir? I'm sorry. Could you repeat your name? We couldn't quite hear.
Last name?
John Stoli.
Stoli? Yeah, John Stoli?
Stoli. S-E-O-L-L-P-Y.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Shane. I didn't come to speak about what the gentleman just spoke, but I'd just add that he's brought up a very important topic, and I'm hoping that the city, you people will start looking at that, because there are some really important issues here. But I came to ask, what? Could you be a little more specific about the meeting? Was that held today with the state?
Yes, yes. Well, 1:00 PM for about an hour and a half.
What was the purpose of it?
To discuss the openness to alternative locations, I'd say was the main purpose, although we got additional background on kind of work to date and discussion of next steps.
Was there any records kept at that meeting?
No.
No public records?
No, except for my report out tonight, and I announced, I think, previous meeting that we'd be holding a meeting with the state.
It was, Steve, it was really, it was exactly what Manager Pierce was saying, and it was just an introduction to find out the feelings for each other in this, in this project, and it was to talk about, you know, alternative areas, you know, for the courthouse, but also we wanted to give them our ideas and our perspective of that courthouse being in that area. So it was really, it was very, it wasn't minutes, it wasn't Utah, you know, it wasn't a formal meeting, it was really trying to be a conversation so that we can get discussion started.
I guess that, my only comment is that that's kind of an unusual meeting anomaly. Those things are done in public, and the whole council would be invited, and it would be a public meeting. I don't think I've ever, in my involvement with city government, been aware of a meeting of this nature taking place, and it would really be great if there was some, at least some minutes, a record of what was talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Louis Seeroy. My wife and I purchased a home on McDonald Avenue 46 years ago and raised our family there. We still live there today. Good evening, councilors, and Mr. City Manager, welcome. We have four young grandchildren. Two of them live in New Hampshire, and two will be starting grades one and four, starting next week at the Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School. They love to go to Nolton Park. They absolutely love it. They go to the playground and splash pad as often as they can. We've seen the single slide has finally been replaced, and that new wood chips have been spread by the public works personnel, and we thank them for that. On July 16th, I attended the Recreation, Recreation Commission meeting to hear about an update on the Nolton Park playground. I learned that a comprehensive inspection report had been received by the Rec Commission that identified several safety-related items that still needed to be repaired. It was estimated that the full list of repairs would cost between $7,000 and $8,000. But the Rec Commission wasn't really sure how many repairs could be completed, because the FY '25 budget did not have funding for playground repairs. So I'm here to ask the city manager and the city staff to find $8,000 in the city's $19.5 million gross budget to complete the full list of repairs as soon as possible. I also learned the playground is indeed 19 years old, which surprised me, and the estimated cost of replacement would be at $150,000. In my opinion, the playground and the splash pad are the most popular and heavily-used facilities that we have, but we have not dedicated the necessary resources to clean and maintain this community asset. That needs to change. That must change. The splash pad concrete is covered with mold and mildew and should be power washed. The parking lots and walkways should be swept. The hanging tree limbs should be trimmed, and the restrooms definitely need to be cleaned more often. I suggested to the Rec Commission that a community volunteer cleanup day could help to spruce up Nolton Park, and I think it would be very much welcomed. We seem to be budgeting to maintain our other public facilities, like De Meyer Field, Harbor Park, City Hall, the library. So I'm here tonight to advocate that we improve our maintenance of the Nolton Park facilities, to make it a shining example of what we have to offer our children, our families, and our visitors to Ellsworth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you very much. Agenda item number 10, Continued Discussion and Potential Action on Seven Fairground Road Property Regarding Whether the Building Has Been Secured and Exterminated.
Good evening. Robert Grant, Code Enforcement. I sent you guys all a packet that showed the photos that the Kaczlaskis family did do what you asked them to do. They boarded up the holes in the roof, or the second floor, rather, and they also boarded up the open door in their garage. And I also submitted to you a very poorly printed, it's not my fault, but emailed about the exterminator, in which it says, the best of my ability to read, that they are going to trap and bait the outside of the house, but now no actual extermination inside the house. And I would guess that the reason for that would be the condition of the inside of the house, that you also saw in the photos. I'm not sure you could get in the house, to be honest, but I guess I'm just here to ask for you guys to do as I asked, as I requested last time, and deem it a dangerous building and have it torn down. Any other questions?
The property owner is gonna follow up, if I'm not mistaken, and provide some clarification on payment of, or the insurance payment. Do you have any update on that?
I do. I'm not sure how much you want to, how many details you want me to get into, but I did speak to their insurance agent, and their claim has been closed.
Can you, so, what do you mean by that?
Because there has been no action on the property for so long, and they have been deemed unwilling to work with the insurance company, their claim was closed.
Okay. So the insurance, the insurance company told you that they're not intending to provide any payment?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless the family is willing to work with them, and I, there are more details I probably shouldn't get into in public about that.
You know, I've looked at this, and if you can see the pictures, I think there's kind of two pieces here, is, you know, they've done this due diligence on the, to the extent possible. As you can see in there, if you can't do infestation control inside that building, there's gonna continue to be that rodent problem. I mean, the, most of the rooms are piled fairly high with, with items, and, you know, it is, seems pretty dangerous just to walk into, so that's gonna limit that piece. The, the other piece is sort of the, you know, if we, if we wanted to go, you know, for another month and request that they would- you know, for another month and request that they would, you know, be required to provide proof that insurance will be paying this claim and that a contractor at least has interest in doing this type of work. This is, you know, this is, would be to save this building or to salvage this building would be an incredible contract. I'm not in this business, but, you know, I would want to see proof that this is going to happen in a reasonable timeframe. And I don't know if that could be an idea here to have a similar council order to have those two things happen, both proof of insurance claim being active and, you know, and, you know, and then the, that a contractor has been secured that's interested in rehabilitating this building. Or we could, you know, knowingly, high bar that those would take and having, I walked that area personally and with Robert and Matt, our planner, that's a, I think that's a very difficult situation. It is, it seems like to be a very dangerous building and I think it's also in the council's purview if they wanted to move forward right away.
I can tell you, I was disappointed looking at that, that they didn't even contact the exterminator until last week.
It was, it was pretty much the 11th hour, yeah.
So, and I went back to look at the minutes and we had asked for it to be exterminated by then, not contacted and exterminated by then.
Has there, have you had communication with the family?
Not since the meeting, no. Oh, no, that's not, that's unsure. He, the son did come in and show me that they had boarded up the windows on the second floor and the garage door that was no longer there, they boarded up. And he also provided me the email that...
So are they aware this is on the agenda tonight?
They should be, yes. I mean, they, 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 well, no, they knew when they had to have it done by, so yes, they were aware.
I think the last meeting too, we discussed that it would be on this one again.
Just trying to get all the information as we move forward.
I know, it's not an easy thing to, it's not, this is not an easy thing to do.
No, this is a big deal.
Well, if we were to deem it a dangerous building, they'd have 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. And if they, you know, in that time, if they were able to make good faith efforts to, you know, we don't have to tear it down after 30 days, you know, we can, if they're able to provide proof of a contractor doing this work or any form of insurance, any kind of financial ability to do the work, we could consider delaying any kind of action. But I don't see any reason why, considering they didn't really follow through in what they said they would do last month and that we have further pictures and evidence that this building is truly dangerous to occupy. My thoughts are, is we can, if the council sees enough evidence to find it dangerous, we can vote to do so and then they still have 30 days to see if they can't give us a reason not to have to take the building down.
Is there any way for them within that 30-day period to appeal to us instead of Superior Court just to lower those barriers for them?
No, we're this, so we're technically the fact finder here. So what our decision would be a decision that they, under the law, under the statute, they can appeal that decision to challenge the validity of it.
Needs to be to a higher body?
And it goes directly to Superior, Main Superior Court. That's how the statute's written.
Any other motion?
Question, not a motion. Is there, obviously, this is a real nuisance to the neighbors, correct? And I try and balance the property owner's rights with the view of this situation. And I think, I think that's really the underlying issue is that it's really an eyesore in that neighborhood and people are trying to fix that problem, if you will. But at some point, they're, they have a right to keep their property in some sort of disorder. Is there another way to approach this? Is there, I mean, are the taxes clear? Is everything paid? There was some talk about a water bill not being paid before and, and I know I'm throwing a lot of questions at you, but was it 100% clear to this family that they should be here tonight?
It was clear. They, he came in on Tuesday of last week and said, I got it all done. I have it all done and he was ready supposedly.
I think it was pretty clear from the last meeting that, you know, this is on the clock and we need, and I think that's, this, to go back in history, our previous code enforcement officer, this one, they've had multiple of these meetings. This has sort of been the state that this has been in for an extensive period of time, unless there's pretty quick proof that there's actual funding available for this and a contractor that's done, you know, this will remain the state of this building in this neighborhood and, you know, get your point on the, on the sort of neighborhood views. There is a separate, I think, local code piece on some of the exterior.
Yeah, we have, we have an ordinance against having a messy yard, basically. Which, which they would also fail the test on if I was going to go after them just for that.
What happens then? Okay, so...
There, I, so if I, if I were to go after them for that, it's a land use violation, I send them a letter. And then there's a process of other letters I would go through if it's not rectified. So they have to clean the yard up. I'm not so concerned so much with that ordinance about what's inside the house. But if they fail to do so after, after a series of letters, eventually there would be some court action. I would have to take them to court over it and have the court force them to clean it up.
There's sort of the higher piece, which is, you know, there is that side, but this is a dangerous building, at least from my opinion, from the opinion of code. And that, that's sort of taking higher precedence here for the demolition of the building. Not, there is exterior issues and code violations on that front that could be pursued as well, but the bigger one is the dangerousness of this building that, you know, after a fire of that nature and then the, you know, the continued disrepair in this area.
Both.
Sort of lack of a plan to get it done.
So both Laura before me and myself, we both kind of forewent the land use violation for the exterior because we figured once the house is taken care of, we could also clean up the outside while we're there. It wouldn't, the one problem takes care of the other.
And we, this is, this is something that's been going on for better than a year, correct? I mean, it's not like this is...
Since, since the house caught fire in February of '23.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a year and a half.
It's been, been a while.
They had a year and four months to...
Six.
Six months, sorry.
Yeah, it's been about 18 months altogether.
They've had, so they've had 18 months to get this done and then we gave them 30 days because they said they could do it and they didn't even call the exterminator until last week, so...
There is a suggested motion in the background memo. Anybody's...
Where's Casey?
I mean, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter that they waited until last minute. They can, you know, time their renovations whenever, whenever they want. That's not the business of this council. But the question is, we, we asked them to show good faith effort with two specific things and they boarded up the windows, which is great, but the pest control was not meant to what we had, so. I think that's the main thing here.
I want to make sure I understand the facts that we have tonight. This is a safety issue for the neighborhood. The insurance claim has been closed, so there is no money for the repair because last month they said that would be their money to make the repairs. The extermination has been partially but not completely done in the way rodents work and that's going to be an issue immediately. And per what Patrick was saying, if I'm understanding you, if we make this motion tonight, they would still have 30 days from tonight to prove that something in those list of facts has changed. I think the only one left with leverage is if they have a capacity to make these improvements. Do I understand those as the facts that we have in front of us?
I feel the difference is, I don't, I think they could have more than 30 days. I think our legal counsel last month said we have pretty widely way with how we want to do this.
Yeah.
But that this step is necessary to move forward with what may need to be done. After 18 months, it seems clear.
Yeah, and I think when, the 30 days is in the statute and that's when they can appeal to Superior Court. And I think the city would want to hold off to see if they did that before proceeding with the property. But even after that, if they don't appeal, you don't have, it doesn't mean we have to go in the next day and tear it down. If they, within those 30 days, make serious steps towards remedying, you know, showing that they actually can rehabilitate this property to make it safe, I'm sure the city would, you know, will listen to them. But this, to deem it, you know, a dangerous building, I think, in my opinion, is what's necessary to advance this matter. Either give, you know, it's further incentive for them to actually resolve it or if they cannot, then we've done our duty and, you know, finding, this is a dangerous building and it needs to be remedied.
And I should also say, you know, I can, I don't know what legal holding it has, but even post a deeming of this building as dangerous, you know, I wouldn't, we'd definitely come back to the council next month if they were to show us, you know, proof of insurance and funding and that contractors are, you know, interested in rehabilitating this building. You know, we would keep that, I would definitely be coming back here before there's any work done to rectify that or change things, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, no one wants to do this, but it's really no other choice, as I see it. So I don't know, I'll, I'd like to, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Well, we can have discussion after you make a motion.
Sure, yeah. So I would move that we deem the property at 7 Fairground a dangerous building pursuant to 17 MRI sections 2851 and instruct the City Manager and Code Enforcement Officer to oversee the demolition of the building and removal of related debris.
I'll second the motion, regretfully.
Discussion?
Happy. Boy, I'm challenged by this. I would like nothing better than to see that mess cleaned up. And I think everybody in this room realizes it needs a bulldozer renovation. It's never going to be rebuilt. I think we all know that. But, boy, I hate to walk onto someone's personal belongings and knock everything out into a dumpster and throw it away just because 100 people think that's what needs to be done and two people, that's their whole life there. I would be more inclined to take the messy approach and to draw a line in the sand that they have X amount of days to clean this up. Make it be clear with the family, hey, if you haven't got this cleaned up in 90 days, we need to take action. But, boy, don't I hate to go in and trample on their stuff. I realize they've had a year and a half, but I think the city deserves to give them a clear definition of what will happen in 90 days or 120 days or 60 days. Or I really struggle with taking their property because we don't approve of what it looks like. And I'm sorry that everybody's in this boat, but, boy, I, I struggle with trampling on their livelihood, even though we see it differently. If there's a messy ordinance thing that could be worked on and could be a 90-day window or 100, whatever the council comes up with for a timeframe, I don't think they've been given a clear timeframe from the city that this will happen if you don't do this within a certain amount of time. I realize they've had a year and a half, but in their world, I don't know if they've had a year and a half.
This has been a hard nine months on the council. This is the first time I've been sick to my stomach on what we need to do, but I think we need to do it. This isn't about what it looks like. This is about safety hazard for the family itself, for the neighborhood. And I'll be voting for the pending motion. And it's awful, but it has to happen for the good of the community and for the good of the neighborhood and I believe for the good of the people who are trying to live there is we are going to have to be the ones that say, it's not going to work. It's not going to happen. The last hope was the insurance. That's not happening. And even as we move it forward tonight, and I am, I do believe it's the right thing to do, even though it's awful, knowing that if something changes, that there is a way to back this up. But in order to move forward with what has to happen for every single party involved here, we need to make this vote tonight and start the motion. And so I will be voting in favor of the pending motion, excuse me.
I would like to, I agree with you, Nate. I don't, I don't like to do this either. I mean, it's, it goes against everything I, I am. But, like you said, it's for the safety of the neighborhood. And I think we have been very clear. That last meeting, we were very clear with them, the 30 days and then what would happen and what they needed to bring back to us and to prove, you know, give a good faith effort. I just don't think that that happened. But, I mean, they will find out what the, whatever we decide tonight and if we do decide to move forward with claiming, whatever it has been coming out on, then they will know. They've, now we can tell them, you've got 30 days to appeal this to Superior Court or you've got 30 days and in that period of time, do some of this work and show a good faith effort of cleaning up that and, you know, taking care of your neighbors and your neighborhood and making sure that, you know, walking down the street, you're not going to get bit by a rat or something that's hanging out around there. So, I agree.
I'm allowed to speak of this piece?
You can, sure.
To your point, Steve, yeah, if any of that, you know, we'll do over and above due diligence here beyond just waiting for the 30 days to expire. Robert will go out, myself included, and kind of express that this has happened, that we're going to be coming back to the next council meeting. And if they can provide, you know, due diligence, that these are on its way, we'll definitely keep that into account. But yes, there has been an incredible amount of staff time already, notifications, you know, that have gone out to this family to rectify this and we have not seen the level. That's, that's why we're here with this.
Any further discussion with the council? All those in favor? Not in favor? Thank you very much for all your hard work on this.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow and let them know what was done.
Yeah, I'd appreciate you doing that. Thank you. Okay, oh, stay there. Item number 11. Continue discussion and potential action on Main Organics. Code Office complaints report and Planning Office report on planning board discussions at time of approval, DEP roll.
I'm going to start with the complaint report. Since last time, just an update of the complaints that have come in since the last meeting.
There were a whopping 15 in the last, last month. Most of them were just complaints about smell on 180 itself. I had five complaints that were of smell off the property at somebody else's property, but there were no violations. They were, it was all taken care of within what I deem to be a reasonable amount of time.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, per the consent agreement.
Can you, can you explain that a little bit more? What do you mean by that, they were taken care of and...
Oh, the, they have, as per the consent agreement, they have, once I deem that the smell is coming from Main Organics, it's off-site at somebody else's property, they have, it's up to my discretion, but they have, I give them a reasonable amount of time, usually an hour or two, to make sure the smell goes away. And then every time so far, they've managed to do that, but I've been able to go and verify the smell was actually coming from Main Organics.
And is Main Organics doing... And is Maine Organics doing something to then knock down the smell, or is the smell just going away?
No, they, they have actually, in talking with me, we decided to bring in a second loader operator, and now, now they're using two loader operators in the morning during their allowed time to, to turn piles and make more smell. It's between six AM and eight AM, to get that done more quickly, and to make sure that all of it gets done when it's supposed to get done, so none of their piles go without, and that causes them to smell worse if they don't get turned regularly. And I also have, if we want, whenever we wanna get into that, I also have a DEP report. They were there on Friday, and they, they did a report with their findings that I received this afternoon, so it was too late to go into the packets for you.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be good to hear that. And just to clarify, Robert, so, they have until, under the consent agreement, they have between six and eight AM every day.
Yes, and then?
To turn the piles.
Yeah, to be able to make more smell than would normally be allowed.
And then, they, at eight o'clock?
They have an hour.
They have an hour.
It has to smell for an hour continuously outside of that six to eight.
To be a violation of the consent.
To be a violation, yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear about that.
No, that's fine. And, and so, in, in the last month, has this addition of a second loader taken place recently, or?
Yeah, within the last month. And I, the DEP report actually, I think, once, once we get, once, once we wanna get into that, I think will help explain why this persistent smell on, right on the rotor, immediately off the site on the one eighty is occurring, and how they're gonna fix that.
Okay, yeah, no, I think, I just, I think for the public, too, I just wanted to ask questions to understand, so.
Absolutely.
So, in the last month, they brought in a second loader to turn it faster?
Yeah.
Are they doing anything else on, they throw wood, I know they use wood chips and stuff?
Yeah, they, they're, I don't think they ever have enough wood chips. They, they are covering the piles like crazy in wood chips, using softwood pines, brew sort of smell to help mask the, the odor, and they, they mix those in pretty, pretty liberally with.
They do that every day?
Yeah. Any, anytime a pile, when they turn it, as soon as they turn it, they go cover it with the wood chips.
So, they turn it, two loaders, and then they cover it with wood chips, and this is all done before eight o'clock?
Yeah, well, the, one of, one of the problems they had in the past was that they only had one operator there during their, their mixing time. So, he would have to go mix the, the new stuff, and also try to turn all of their piles. However, the operation got to be too large for one, one loaded handle, and now they've rectified that.
Okay, so they're able to get it all done within that two-hour timeframe?
So far, yeah.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you for explaining. And, yeah, I think we'd be interested in hearing what the DEP has to say.
Whenever we wanna get into that.
Before we get into that for clarity, when you say the smell on one eighty doesn't constitute a violation, is that because it's not personal property?
Correct.
You're smelling it on?
It's, yeah, it has, it has to be damaging somebody else's enjoyment of their personal property.
Before I get into the DEP report, I'll go over what the planning board discussed in terms of smell, because then it segues into the DEP report, kind of, so. There were a ton of conversations about smell during the meetings that came forward to the planning board, and there was discussion about ultimately the city trying to create performance standards for this specific use, but through the review of the application and through information from the DEP, they determined that DEP had a solid enough set of standards to regulate the type of industrial compost use that we have at the site, and that the city really couldn't add anything to that, like, we don't have an expert in that sort of thing on staff like DEP does, and DEP regulations are pretty strict, as they were. So, the board ultimately decided to defer to DEP as the licensing agent, did not create additional standards in the ordinance for this use. And through that kind of rationale, it's kind of been asking DEP to step up a little bit more, be more active in this issue, and Robert did reach out to DEP, and I want to get a copy of the report, they specifically mentioned, it was at his request that they came out last week, and so, they did do a site evaluation, and I'll let Robert kind of read into what the findings were, and what their requests for the business were moving forward.
The, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit here, the, for anybody that's never been to Maine Organics on the council, they have winrows of their product, and what's happened is the winrows have gotten too close to their stormwater system, so that when we get those heavy rains that we've had lately, they, a, something called leachate comes out of the piles with the, with the rainwater, and that's getting down into their stormwater ditch, and in there, they have a pond there as well to retain the stormwater. And that's not composting correctly anymore, it's, this, this material's actually rotting in the ditch, and that's been the problem with the smell, and that's why, but it also doesn't carry, because it's down in the ditch, and it stays very local. So, the recommendations, the first recommendation on how to correct, correct that problem?
This is the DEP's recommendation?
The DEP's recommendations, yes, is to have a fifty-foot clear buffer between those winrows and the ditch, so to move the winrows back, to, to reduce the size of them in general. And then, they're gonna, they want to create basically a, almost like an erosion control barrier with their finished product compost to, to catch the leachate, make, make a row along, parallel to the ditch, to catch the leachate with their finished product, and then that way, the water passes through the finished products, and the leachate gets stuck in the finished product, and hopefully mostly clean water gets to the ditch.
To use the cleaner product?
Yes, use the, use the finished product to catch the leachate, as a, as a sort of erosion. It would be similar to a, to a construction site using erosion control mix to keep rainwater runoff out of, like Branch Lake, for instance, when they have a project down there. And they said, place all the composting winrows to run perpendicular to the slope of the compost They can be butted up to the newly positioned finished compost winrow, so they're saying you can build, they can build these winrows up to this new erosion control barrier they have. So, they're just saying you can build it up to that, but put that winrow barrier at fifty feet, and there, this is what they hope will, will fix the issue with the smell we're not wanting. They have also instructed Maine Organics to have their engineer look more closely at their, at their licensed stormwater and leachate control measures, and come up with a plan to prevent any future leachate from escaping their impervious compost pad. So, in addition to what, in addition to what they're doing now in the short term with the, with the, the finished product, they want to figure out in the future, how do we have a more permanent solution? This is just fixed in the short term with the winrow of the finished product. And then they said that they need to cover up any of the decomposing lobster bodies with compost amendment, that would be their, their wood chips. They said, in, in the, the other part of the, of the report, it wasn't just the corrective actions, they did notice that some of the lobster bodies did get out of the piles, and, so they're saying just collect, collect those up and cover them with the wood chips. And then, and then they said, just continue to, the last thing on the corrective action was just continue to monitor all, all existing and future composting winrows for proper temperature, CN ratios, porosity, moisture content, et cetera, et cetera, just keep doing what they're doing, basically. And the DEP wants all that done by the thirtieth of this month.
So, is this from the DEP, is this a, any form of like violation letter, or is it more of just like?
No, this is, it was basically a report card on how they, how they're doing, and how, where their shortcoming was on the leachate problem. It wasn't a violation.
If they don't fix it?
If they don't fix it by the thirtieth, it would probably, it could potentially become a violation.
From the DEP?
Correct.
Okay.
Clarifying question, you had fifteen complaints this month, but only five were for off-site stink?
They were fifteen complaints, so ten of those complaints were, were citizens complaining that there was smell right on one eighty.
Right. But five were for?
Five were off-site, yes.
How does that trend with what we were dealing with in July, June, May?
Down. There, it's, it's down from June and July, from what I have.
Are the one eighty complaints ten different people, or ten complaints?
Ten complaints. It's not all, not ten different people.
So, for the DEP, was it your sense that they're engaged with this issue, and that they'll, that there'll be some sincere follow-up?
Absolutely.
If this isn't addressed?
I, I speak, well, with, I, I say, I can't really say his name, Ed Stamborski, I believe his name is. I speak to him about Maine Organics fairly often, and I, I made, I made the anecdotal connection between the rain and the smell getting really bad on one eighty, and that's when I, I asked him to, if he would investigate that for me. I ride by it twice a day.
Yeah, yeah.
To and from work, at least, if not more often.
And if I recall, you had mentioned identifying the leachate problem potentially over a month ago, so it's, this is the problem that you had identified, and DEP confirmed that?
Yep. It's, it took them a while to get there, but they, they got there on Friday.
Okay. Well, if they come here on Friday, it'll take a while to get here from Augusta, with all the traffic.
If I understand you right, we will know by August thirtieth?
They, yeah.
Whether they have fixed the problem?
I, I would assume this means that the DEP is going back on the thirtieth to confirm that what they asked them to do has been done.
We can make sure of that.
Yes, I'll go out on the thirtieth and.
Well, it's, if.
Yeah.
Could you update the council on that?
Well, I got a couple of points, that would be one of them, but if, if they're, I think specifically asking DEP, because if it's not done by the thirtieth, maybe the first, it is a violation that should be considered. And updating specifically the conversation that we had last month, I thought this month we were going to be hearing from the attorney on what flexibility we have with renegotiating the consent agenda, because it's not working. And I thought that was the conversation we were gonna have this evening, but I, I would like for us to be ready to have that conversation at the next council meeting if this looks like it hasn't fixed the problem by the thirtieth.
Yeah, last meeting, excuse me, I believe the attorney said that you do have flexibility to amend the consent agreement, but it's a consent agreement, so you need to have the other party also consent to those changes, but as long as you have that, you can amend the agreement however you want. Now, if there's disagreement on things that the council wants, and maybe the other party doesn't, then it's no longer a consent agreement, and there would have to be a potential action moving forward separate from the consent agreement.
And I'm, sorry to jump in here, but it was, I've been thinking a lot about this one, and, you know, I think, as much as I hate to do it, I think this is like, a workshop is potentially the intervening step post the DEP piece. There needs to be like, like, we could consume, you know, a pretty significant amount of time on some back and forth discussions here, there's also some interesting, you know, dependencies, both Jackson Labs, and what they would do with their products after this, from their representatives, landscaping companies, but then also variety of business owners on the other side that are affected by this. I'm also trying to get a, a read from council, like, is, you know, will, will be able to report out, maybe that this kind of workshop could happen after this, this new piece of information on if the DEP, and if these things have been addressed, and maybe that's addressed many of these areas, but maybe the smell sort of still waffles, waffles across on occasion, and is that the level of, like, that we're looking for within that consent agreement from council? Are we trying to get it to a zero smell, and that is the sort of direction, and, you know, I think there's a lot more of a, you know, we need to have some, some robust debate based on a, you know, a pretty significant amount of facts, and stakeholders, and that could be a multiple-step process, maybe it's a workshop with Maine Organics, maybe it's a work, on the consent, and we kind of try to come to resolution. I feel like if we try and do that with the council meetings, we're gonna.
I think that's a great suggestion, that if Maine Organics knows, and the neighbors know that, even, I don't know, see how things look on August thirtieth, and go with your recommendation on whether we need, like, they need a workshop before the next city council meeting, so that we can look at what the next steps might be. I don't, it's a great business, I like buying their product. I also have been listening to this and understand the severity of the issue. I'm, I'm optimistic, it sounds like DEP was able to give them guidance on how to do their work better, and that's encouraging. I, I hope that's a resolution, and maybe the torrential rains will stop, but.
Be great if we could have DEP a part of that conversation, just to understand their perspect, I know.
Is that great?
Getting DEP to get anywhere, do anything's difficult at times, but.
Yep.
That, the fact that they have the jurisdiction over this, and they're the licensing authority, just having them, their perspective as part of that conversation would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, it's heartening that DEP is getting involved with an actual plan, it sounds like it'll mitigate a lot of the smell. I, I think that the consent agreement was a good idea, in that it gave us relatively objective metrics for measuring this, and, and specific, and, and metrics that we could evaluate, as we're doing right now, you know, were there violations? No, there weren't. What were the specific complaints? That's all really helpful, but I think that the fact that it's still creating an untenable smell for some of the neighbors, and even people farther afield, is a failure of the specifics of the consent agreement, so I think that the discussion later should be on tightening that, where I don't think if we, as a council, decide to let this business continue as hopefully cleaned up with the DEP, and maybe even future projects to, to reduce the, the stink, that it won't ever be a zero-smell operation, but that we can further tighten and workshop, after, a workshop for gathering information from all the different parties, a consenting agreement that really tightens the rains and is more, is more tenable. After a workshop.
The, the DEP, have you ever asked them, is it possible to have a zero-smell compost facility?
I, I've never asked, but I, I would imagine it'd be pretty difficult to have a zero-smell.
Yeah.
You okay?
I mean, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mike and I, he has a four-point PowerPoint slide presentation, but we are voting that, that's why I kind of honestly came to my office today, and that's why I said workshop, like, this is workshop, we can't, you're not doing your presentation today. But he could say maybe a little bit, Mike, he has some expertise in this smell area.
Yeah, he does.
So, on what it would take to kind of get there.
You made Tammy vomit.
Good evening, everybody, Mike Harris, Police Works Director. So, let's just be super clear here. This entity, as it's currently designed and built, is not ever going to be zero. Let's just be hon, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not gonna be, okay? There are things that they can do to become zero, but it's a lot of money. So, they make odor control scrubbers, and they make, what they would have to do is cover their piles in a building, and then that building would have to have an odor control scrubber attached to it, and that odor control scrubber would scrub the odors, and it would disappear. That's what would have to happen. Whether that company has the capital investment opportunity to do something like that is, it's a, it's a, probably a millions-dollar project. So, just to give you some scale, when Michelle was city manager, and when we had the old plant down on Water Street, right before we built the new plant, we used to have terrible odors. Like, Water Street was awful, I smelled awful, it was just, is what it was. So, we invested in an odor control scrubber to put in that building, to try and mitigate the smell on Water Street. So, that unit, for the building that we had down there back then, so it would have been fifteen years ago, at that time, was a hundred thousand dollars, and that's not close to, that building is not close to big enough for what you're talking about, to have them basically quit their compost operation inside. Because it's not just a matter of putting in the building, because if they turn those piles inside a closed building, it's dangerous for the employee, and the corrosiveness of that atmosphere would just eat the building, it would just destroy it. And so, that's why you would have to put the odor control scrubber in there to ventilate that building and eliminate those odors. So, it's not a simple task, but for, and even then, I can't promise you that it'd be exactly zero all the time, but, yeah, ninety-nine percent of the time, you'd probably be at zero. But, as it's constituted now, unless there's fundamental change in the way that it's built, and the way that it's designed, and there's serious infrastructure invested in it, you're not going to get rid of the odor. You, you can, so I spoke to you about the leachate a while back. You can, so I spoke to you about the leachate a while back. The leachate is definitely an odor source, and so I'm glad that the D E P is gonna hit that. But I will tell you, August 30th, you're not gonna get what you want from the D E P, because I deal with the D E P on a regular basis. So what'll happen is the D E P will check back with the facility to see if, if they haven't heard from them by the 30th, they'll give them a grace period and then they'll check back and say, hey, you had your inspection report. You're supposed to have this done by the 30th. Where are you at? And then the facility will have the opportunity to respond and say, we've done this, this, and this. We haven't done this. And the D E P will come back and say, okay, well then, we're gonna give you this much more time to get these parts of it done. It will become a prolonged process. I just know from experience. Because there's never, it's never, it's never gonna be a situation where you would say, we didn't inspect your report, you had these action items, you need to have these actions done by the 30th. Not, we're gonna come down and shut you down. That's not, that's an error. That's realistic. There's always gonna be the back and forth, hey, we're trying. Okay, you're trying. We're gonna give you some more time. There's gonna be that interaction and it's gonna stretch. So I, I'm not trying to pour water on the D E P report. I'm just trying to be honest with you that if you think on August 30th or September 1st, the D E P is gonna come back right away and say, hey, you're not doing what you're supposed to do. We're gonna find you. We're gonna shut you down. That's not gonna happen. It's an inspection report. We've had inspection reports in the past. They ended up in becoming a memorandum of understanding and then it became a consent agreement. And that's why we ended up building a new plant. That's the way these things work. And so a workshop's a great idea. I would suggest that, you know, maybe, and I don't know if they have or not, but maybe Maine Organics needs to talk to their partners like Jax and talk to their partners like the people that get all their seafood waste from, about partnering and trying to do some kind of mitigation plan where everybody kicks in some money or something. Maybe there's some grant money out there. I don't know. But to have a zero smell operation is gonna cost millions, probably, to take care of it. And if you want me at the workshop, I put together a little PowerPoint presentation that shows you what those look like. And I can show that to you, but that's, that's where you're going. It's either they're gonna go out of business or they're gonna have to spend millions. If your, if your goal is to have zero smell, if that's your goal, they're either going out of business or they're gonna be investing millions. That's where they're at.
So I feel like, yeah, it's kind of where you get to the workshop with following Mike and the potential, there's gonna be a lot here. And as much as I think the D E P piece is right, is that it's not gonna be a panacea to this whole thing, that it's gonna, you know, it's really, and where does the council want, you know, want that line to be? And how are we getting on a better track? I think, Steve, you mentioned, a lot of the folks have mentioned since this has been a process since it started, and trying to get it as best we can get it to. And trying to get maybe a workshop together for a little more pieces of that, which could lead to a modified consent agreement. It could be that the D E P changes, bring this down to a level where we might not be at zero, but we're closer and we'll just have to keep moving on it. I feel like it's gonna be a process.
I know you're dying to say something, so go ahead.
I'm not gonna say all that I'd like to say, but I am gonna say a few things. I went back and watched the videos of the planning board and granted the contractor hadn't been in that business prior. And I think that anything that they offered at that meeting was in good faith, but I don't think it's turned out that way. It was licensed in 2017. This is 2024. It smelled in 17 and it smells in 24. There's a lot of broken promises. We have an odor ordinance where we're not allowed in Ellsworth to push an odor over the boundary lines of your property. It's been going on for seven years. I've been here three years and I have brought this before the council many times. And many times, there are broken promises and there are reasons and there are, this is gonna be better and this is gonna be better. We're seven years in and I don't think that we're any better off. Having said that, in the contractor's defense, the contractor being Maine Organics, I believe the three years that I have been here, they have gotten better at it every year. But I don't think it's fair to their neighbors that they get a license to practice. And the solution came with this administrative consent agreement, which allows them to break the rules. And I said the night that this came across the desk up here, does that mean everybody gets to break the rules from 6:00 to 8:00 on High Street in Ellsworth? So I believe that the city has continued to allow this to happen and continued to protect the contractor while violating the people that are having to deal with this problem. And it's really disheartening. Just before this item, we saw the city throw the book at a family that's been burned out. And for three solid years since I've been here, everyone stands up and defends this problem and promises things that don't happen. The contractor doesn't even come because he knows the city is gonna do nothing and gonna let him get away with what's going on.
Is there any, this is, there's no decision to be made according to this. So is there any further discussion? Thank you. Okay, the next section of the agenda is new business. This is...
I was, I'm sorry. I was understanding, don't speak at the beginning because you're not speaking because there's another topic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's not, it wasn't a public hearing and so I just, but go ahead, sure.
I'm Tim Stone. I've got three minutes, so I won't introduce myself any more than that. Please look at the consent agreement, the actual mechanics of it. There are seven steps. For the most part, every time it would actually be in violation, it would take four and a half hours of constant smell. That's not the problem we're facing. We're facing an intermittent smell that comes and goes that is still pretty vile. Let's talk about the planning board meetings. Please watch them. There's two of them. Reggie finally said what was never said at either of those planning meetings. That was not said. Nothing like that was said. What was said over and over and over and over and over again, because the planning board was very concerned about it, is there will be little to no odor. It's not gonna smell. Then finally, they pushed it off on the D E P enforcing it. The D E P officer came to my property one time in the last two years. And he said to my wife, you shouldn't have bought this property. You should do this someplace else. It's gonna smell. On paper, the D E P is supposed to enforce these kinds of things. They're not interested in doing that. Came to my property and told me to sell it and go somewhere else. It's gonna smell really bad. So the town keeps pushing this off on the D E P and keeps getting excited. Every time I come to one of these meetings, it's getting a little frustrating for me, frankly. There's this hope that they will get better and better and better and better. And we've been doing this for years and years and years. Any other business, you can't operate that way. How can you expect to have a different result if you're doing the same thing over and over and over again? If you go back through city councils before any of you were here, we've done this already before with different members. You can see the emails. They're open to public record. Last thing. You want more complaints? Robert's not getting a lot of complaints. I can get you more complaints. You know who they come and complain to? Me. They don't come here. They don't even wanna speak here. I had a person come to me today. Steady stream of complaints coming to me. How can we stop this problem? I have yet to canvass the neighborhood, but I will canvass the neighborhood and show everybody how to complain. There'll be a ton of complaints if you want more complaints. Good idea.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to talk on this agenda item? New business. We have, we'll have a public hearing on the applications for business applications, but I would like to ask the council, I'm going to take this into two pieces. I'd like to do the public hearing for Pepper's Pub and for Dragonfire and then afterwards do a separate one for the Mex. So, public hearing in action on the application for renewal for the following licenses. Jennifer Wing Goodrich, DBA Pepper's Pub, 20 Water Street for renewal of a city Class B license. Amusement liquor, vichyler, and renewal of a state Class A restaurant lounge liquor license. And De Butler Did It, LLC DBA Dragonfire, 248 State Street for renewal of a city Class B license. RK vichyler liquor and renewal of a salt, of state malt liquor license. Now, open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these two licenses? Seeing none, close the public hearing. It's your pleasure.
Paperwork, good standing, all of that. Move to approved licenses for Jennifer Wing Goodrich, DBA Pepper's Pub and De Butler Did It, LLC DBA Dragonfire.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? So the next one is Marg's Mex Ellsworth, LLC DBA Margaritas Ellsworth, 191 Main Street for renewal of a class city, Class B license, amusement liquor, vichyler, and renewal of a state Class A restaurant lounge malt liquor, wine spirits, Class 11 liquor license. I'm going to hold the public hearing and then I'll explain why I separated this. Public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this license? Close the public hearing. Do you want me to explain this? Okay. So Margaritas has not had their inspections. They have been trying for weeks to do so, the code enforcement and fire, public safety. And they just came in today to pay for their license and they were told that they've been trying to get in there. Ebony told them that, you know, that they would follow right down, so they'd get the inspection done, so everything would be good tonight. The guy goes, yeah. And he went to Bangor. Margaritas is closed today. So the inspections did not get done. So what I would like to do is table this until the next meeting in September. Their liquor license does and expires tomorrow. And then their license expires the end of this month, the city license. We can extend the license, their license until the next meeting. We can't extend the state licenses. That they would have to, we would have to call and ask them to do that tomorrow.
Ebony, were they delayed? Were they supposed to get license approval with the town last month? Because I know you need to send in a couple of weeks in advance for state liquor licensing? Or is this, when they do it every year?
This is when they do it every year.
Okay.
Next year, I can move it up.
Yeah, we can consider moving it up. I shall also note that Ebony and our team has done multiple reach-outs, calls. This was not a, today we were scrambling trying to get this finalized. We've been doing a lot of due diligence on Sue and Ebony and our co-teams. So there's been a lot of notifications leading up to today.
So they would essentially have a temporary business license until next month, but not be able to serve liquor for state license?
Unless they reach out to the state and they give us a number.
So they screwed up and didn't follow up with the city when they should have, is my understanding. But we can extend it to them, this grace period from the city's perspective of the license. Okay. For the food and then the liquor, they have to deal with that with the state. Okay. I mean, yeah, I think, I don't wanna see them shut down. But I don't know if there's a way to make clear to them that they should, you know, get their act together as far as next year goes.
I mean, I would feel bad if we hadn't reached out several times and even today and said, they'll follow you down, just, you know, be there and they didn't do it. So...
Is there any reason not to give them that 30-day extension on what we can handle, which is the city license? Is everything, there have been no complaints? There's no issues? It's just their follow-through?
Code enforcement.
It would just be, yeah, code and fire, potential hazards, but they're in theory inspected and licensed through HHS for food and safety and the state liquor for liquor.
Thought you could escape, huh?
Well, it's like Hotel California.
Yeah. So we're discussing the Mex license and extending the city portion that we can extend until September. The liquor license, that would be up to the state, but is there a reason not to extend this?
I've had no complaints. I just haven't had a chance to get in and actually do an inspection yet. Despite our numerous attempts to do so.
Thank you.
This business was inspected a year ago? Is that fair to say?
As far as I know. I wasn't here, but as far as I know, yes.
If it was approved, due diligence would have required that.
So it's passed one time. This is relatively new, this organization, right? Margaritas?
It's maybe several years.
So it's the same owner as the Mex? Is a Margaritas new?
It's new, yeah. It's no longer the Mex.
Right. That's what I'm getting at.
Michelle keeps saying the Mex, I think.
No, it's called Marg's Mex Ellsworth LLC.
So you're both right.
Yeah, but Margaritas has been...
They've been under the Margaritas ownership since 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So they've never failed yet?
Not that I know of.
Couldn't we find some, some sort of way to make their business flow? I don't know the behind-the-scenes thing here, but maybe you've given them all kinds of chances. But boy, I hate to just kick them into the next meeting in September.
Well, that's not what we're proposing, I think.
So we can provide them with the state liquor license and its inspectors' contact information and tell them to call and request a 30-day extension, but at this point, we can't control the liquor license portion if it expires tomorrow. But we can provide them with the information if the liquor inspector is able to come and make that a... Just the same, in the same way that you can extend the business license for 30 days. The state does have the ability to extend a liquor license for 30 days. But they need to be notified and they need, it's within their jurisdiction to be able to provide that extension.
So we can extend the business license for 30 days, which will get them to the next council agenda to vote for the re-up for the year.
That would also help them with the liquor license.
Exactly. So they would have the temporary for, if the state approves it, they'd have the temporary for 30 days for a liquor license. But if you approve this on September 16th, I think is the next council meeting, then they wouldn't need to go the full 30 days on the temporary. They would have a full license at that point for both the business and liquor. for both the business and liquor.
Sounds reasonable to me.
So, is that a motion to table and to allow a 30-day extension? Table till next month?
We can't table it because if we table it, then we can't discuss and we can't change the motion. So, if you just make a motion to, to extend this for 30 days and bring it back up at the next meeting?
Okay, so that covers everything we need to do?
Yes.
Can I just say, "So moved"? Motion to extend the business license till the next council meeting?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
To be continued.
They might need some council signatures for state liquor license extension, but they might not.
If they do, I'm, I'm in Ellsworth tomorrow. I can do it. Okay. We have two new... I'm sorry, Ebony, why are these the last two separated?
Pat's is changing their license type from C to B.
Okay, so that's a...
Fusion is actually brand new.
Okay. Okay, so two new licenses. We'll have a public hearing. ARG Incorporated, DBA Pat's Pizza, 396 High Street for a new city Class B license, amusement, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class 1, 2, 3, and 4, malt, spiritus, venus liquor license. Currently has a Class C, changing to a Class B. Correct, okay. The Fusion Buffet, 200 High Street for a new city Class C license, victular and liquor, and a new state liquor license. Okay. Open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these two licenses? Close the public hearing. Counsel?
All the paperwork's in order?
Do we require new businesses and/or new licenses to be in attendance?
Yeah, license, yes.
Pat is here, too.
Oh, hi. Yes, I see Pat's Pizza's here. Thank you.
Could we hear about Fusion?
Yeah.
Purely from a city council perspective, we'd like to hear about the new restaurant.
If you just come in up to...
Good advertising opportunity as well.
Yeah.
Hello, the name is Your Honored. So, the Fusion Buffet, the name Fusion come about because it's gonna be five different cuisines under one roof. So, it's gonna be Indian, Chinese, Thai food, some American food, and some Caribbean cuisine.
Oh, nice. And is it all buffet or?
Yeah, it's all buffet.
Nice.
Incredible. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
There's more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
While we're here, anticipated open date.
If we get approval today, we may push for the next six days, so may run us the 25th or the 26th.
Great. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to Ellsworth. Any other before I make you leave, before I leave and try to push right through here again?
We like efficiency.
Yes. Thank you very much. So, can I ask Pat's Pizza what you're doing with your new license?
Yeah. Curious about that as well.
Yeah.
So, as recently, we just opened back up Sundays. We had closed Sundays. So, we're looking to do a little live music, Sundays like 12 to 2. Just a little something to bring in a little more business on Sundays. That was it. Yeah. That was, and we needed the new, the different license for the live music.
I appreciate the Sundays. I was there yesterday for myself.
Still making pizza?
Yes.
Talk, that's good.
Strictly council concerns.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The chairman will to approve both ARG Inc., DBA Pat's Pizza, and Fusion Buffet for license serve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving on. Council Order Number 082400, Presentation from the Ellsworth Rotary Club on De Meyer Field Project, sponsored by Manager Pierce.
I'm gonna send it over to our Rotary folk. Rotarians, yep, the...
I'm Debbie Erlenbach, um, past president of the Rotary Club of Ellsworth, and Peter Fariger, also a past president. We thank you for taking the time to hear from us and get an update on the De Meyer Field Project. Just a little brief history for those in the room who may not be aware. Back in 1960, the Rotary Club of Ellsworth purchased the 10 acres of land that's now known as De Meyer Field, built Little League fields, and in 1974, turned that land over to the city of Ellsworth, which obviously was 50 years ago. And our Rotary Club is celebrating its 75th anniversary this year, actually, February 20th. And so, to celebrate that milestone, we wanted to do something to give back to the city. And so, doing our research last year, we met with the Rec Commission, many business leaders, the YMCA, Little League, Challenger Little League, individuals who use those fields, to try to identify a need in the city. And we just gravitated towards the De Meyer Field. And that said, um, we brought our partners together, which are the YMCA, the Little League, Challenger Little League, the Rec Commission, and John was kind of a liaison between you and the Rec Commission. And we met back in October last year to brainstorm the needs there at that location and came up with really kind of a base. And it all fell under safety and spectator expectations. So, given that directive, members of those partners met and, of course, came up with plans, which I know, I believe you have in your packet, which is the master plan that we came up with and some pictures of the playground and the bocce courts. And Michelle was surprised by the bocce courts when we spoke earlier this evening, and they were a direct request from the parents in the Challenger Little League program. So, that's how we came up with that. You have plans of what we're going to be doing there, which is the playground and fencing and field upgrades and parking. And Peter will share all of that with you. I just want to take a minute to share with you our fundraising results. As you know, we held a fundraiser back in May. And I'm very pleased to report that as a result of that, we had 19 businesses or individuals sponsor that event. We had 120 businesses and/or individuals donate for our silent or our live auction. We also had 20 other individuals just simply donate to us. And as you know, we had the Chuck and Belinda Lawrence Challenge Grant. So, I'm very proud and pleased to inform you that we've raised over $150,000 to date for capital improvements at De Meyer Field. And I'm gonna ask Peter to please come forward because he's been instrumental and on the committee for the plans. And he will share where we are with that project to date.
Thank you, Deb. Good evening, folks. Yeah, we're very excited about the project. And where we're at right now is we, um, we had, um, the, um, a design group that included myself from Rotary, Rob Chee, Dan Curtis from Little League, Todd Wagstaff from Challenger, Matt Montgomery from the Y, and a landscape architect named Steve Ribble. He did up all the designs. We're now at the, at the point where, um, this Wednesday, we're meeting with RF Jordan, who is gonna be working with the first phase. The first phase of the project in your master plan is the playground area, the safety path that goes behind the, um, green monster, which is now maroon, to have kids go from D1, the first field, to the concession stand and the third field without going onto the street. Which is, you know, it's, it's all about the kid's safety. And, um, the other big component is a playground that we've already purchased and it's on its way. And the, um, and that's the idea of having a place for kids that are not engaged into the activities right away, a place to play. Right now, they're playing on a, um, dirt pile. So, um, we have a real nice playground coming, which is also handicap accessible along with, with the bocce courts. The, the steps with Phase 1, as our goal is in October to do the groundwork, the drainage. We have really cool plans that kind of tells us where we're gonna be and what we're gonna... So, RF Jordan knows, kind of knows what they're getting themselves into. And, yeah. And so, the, um, the, the site work will be worked this October, with the finishing work being done in spring prior to the Little League season. That's when the playground would be put in, all the finish work, all the finish, um, stoned dust and all the things that, um, above my pay grade that RF Jordan and a lot of volunteers will take care of. And, um, and that's Phase 1. The, the dollars that we have will go towards the project. We're still getting a, um, a lot of community support. And it's our hope that, um, you know, as we go forward and we continue this, this project, we'll probably have to raise a little bit more, some more money. But we'd like to be able to, um, continue this community support so that there's gonna be a, a fund that will be in the Rotary Foundation that can be there for sustainability, for things that are needed, um, have, you know, whatever, that the groups can, you know, write to Rotary and say, "Hey, this broke. We need this fixed." And, uh, that's our goal. That's our hope. You know, and, um, so we, we definitely have some more fundraising to do. But you'll start seeing some things happening in October. Spring, uh, springtime will be the, um, the finishing work for Phase 1, which is really a big portion of it in the safety of the kids. And, um, and I was told a couple of days ago that Little League got the state tournament this next year. So, we'll have all this done in time for the state tournament, which I think will, um, be a really beautiful thing for the city of Ellsworth. And, um, and, you know, we talk about continuing fundraising. We're having a fence around the playground. And so, we have a donor recognition. He's a beautiful... $250. You can have your business name on this. And so, we're gonna be doing a big push within the chamber and also the community to continue to try to raise, you know, money so that we can continue to move forward and, um, finish the project in style. And if you look at these, these are quality.
That's fine, Mark.
It's serious. So, um, so that's, um, that's ongoing. And then, um, once we recognize how much Phase 1 will cost to complete the project, then we'll be working at Phase 3. Excuse me, Phase 2. Phase 2 is, um, re-aligning the De Meyer 3 field, which right now is really just used for practice. Yeah, farm league, practice. And we're, um, and I think the Y uses it for some youth soccer and also some football. So, there's gonna be a redesign adding parking because right now, if you go down Boggy Book Road, parking's all over the place. People run it all over the place. So, we're gonna try to have some parking there, which you can see on, on the design so that people can, you know, park, watch activities. And it'd be great for older adults if they don't want to leave the, um, their vehicles, they can kind of watch some of the activities. But revamp that field. So, that'd be Phase 2. And so, uh, so it's a work in progress, you know, with the success of the fundraiser and the support of the community, the incredible support of the community. Our, um, our goal was what? That 50,000? Yeah. So, yeah, our goal was 50,000. And, um, we, we did over 150. Ebony, Ebony went crazy. The, um, it was...
It's because the community truly believed in the project and it's what it was all about.
So, it's, it's, it's pretty neat. We do have pictures of, of the playground here. You guys have it in your packet. So, um, more work to be done. We'll keep you in the loop, of course. It's your property now because we gave it to you. And, um, and we'll keep going. It's gonna, it's a, it's a great thing. And, uh, we're very excited for next spring. Questions? Steve?
Do you have a... The total cost of this project must exceed 150 by a long ways. Is that correct?
If you were paying for everything, yes. You know, but there's been a lot of in-kind, um, offerings that have come. You know, um, all, you know, it's, it's amazing. So, you know, the, um, 150 will be utilized towards things that we, we can't get donated. Like the playground, we have to pay for that. You know, um, but we have a lot of talent in this community that people are excited about, keeping kids safe, you know, activities up in De Meyer and all the different, you know, it's, it ha... Things happen in the spring all the way to the end of October. You know, so I think it's, um, you know, we're, we're hoping that generosity continues as we go forward. And, um, we'll keep going. We've got a great, you know, um, group of people, you know, with Rob Chee kind of leading it, leading, leading the charge, you know, trying to make this thing happen. So, I think we're gonna be raising some more money. So, I think we're going to be raising some more money, Steve, you know? And, but that's okay. It's a great cause.
I should, should note, I met with you two earlier, or late in the spring during the height of budget season and, you know, getting there and presenting the presentation and I got it finished and I was, where is, is there a request for money? And they're like, no, we've raised it and we're in good shape. And that was, wow.
I think you guys know me, never say never about asking for money. But, you know, we're just, we're still, we're working it. And I do have to say, great leadership from Debbie and Deborah went back and, you know, the steering committee that she put together to bring this thing forward. So it's been awesome. It's been fun.
And just for a plug for EllsworthRotary.org, there seems to be a contact there if they want one of those two hundred and fifty dollar.
Absolutely. It's on our website. Demeyer Field Project. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Item fourteen, Council Order zero eight two four zero one, approval of the city manager appointments, promotions.
Yes, we have three today. The, one is required by charter, the, the police chief, the other two are deputy chief, and the director of communications are not required, but nothing precludes the city council from approving them. And three great individuals, our police chief, who I already sang his praises last time around, so I won't repeat too much, though I will say, one of the things that I'm so confident and happy in Chief Beers in this role is his ability to pick great deputies and to kind of inspire leadership throughout his organization. And you all have had the pleasure of meeting and getting to know Sean through the budget process, through, you know, all things relative to Ellsworth. And, you know, I'm really excited to nominate Sean to be our deputy police chief here in Ellsworth. He's an Arista County native that resides in Ellsworth, began his police department here with the Ellsworth Department in two thousand and three, that's twenty-one years. He was a canine handler from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-one, worked to patrol narcotics canines and was successful in many large drug seizures and life-saving efforts for missing and people and those dealing with mental health issues throughout the country. He researched, presented, and successfully brought the first lethal taser weapon system program to Ellsworth in two thousand and seven. He was a, played a lead role for putting on every fifteen-minute program at Ellsworth High School for many years and has designed and overseen the implementation of the city's DMR communication system for emergency services. He's completed the FBI's Trilogy Leadership Course, was promoted to captain in two thousand and twenty-one. He managed a police department fleet and brought the new lease program to the city to better budget for vehicles. Should also say that, you know, in our last budget conversations, we had a lot of conversations about lease and other things. He's continued to help us out, not just in the police department, but Mike and he have had many conversations, I've had some conversations on, you know, how we really think holistically about our fleets and cost savings. He's an expert, not just in the police area, but to a lot of other areas in our, our processes. He also was instrumental in implementation of the Maine Law Enforcement Accreditation Program for Ellsworth PD, were the ninth agency in Maine to receive the award. It's, you know, an enormous deal, there's a hundred and seventy-five-plus standards they have to meet. And I think if anybody of those of you have had the pleasure to meet many of our members or our police units, they, that really shows. They are taking credible pride and professionalism in their work. And I think as this long list of credentials and training that, that Sean has really, really shows, you know, how well-served this community has been by him and how great I believe he's going to be in the, the deputy police chief role, I really, I'm really looking forward to, you know, we were there last week for a management meeting, got to hear a little bit more about the strategy for the police department over the next year, and really looking forward to partnering with both Sean and Troy on the next big step for the Ellsworth Police Department. So, excited for, for that one. Also, on to our last one, which is promotion of Maura Condon to the director of communications. Prior to her role as the director of communications, Maura was the communications specialist and an executive assistant to the city manager. And prior to her role here in Ellsworth, she was a research coordinator with the East Tennessee State University, where she collaborated on grant funding research for a statewide healthcare program. She was also a graduate assistant at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, working on their Integrated Network for Social Sustainability. And she, she holds a master's degree in anthropology, which is going to be very helpful, I think, in this role, from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, and a bachelor's degree in the same subject from the State University of New York. So those are my three recommendations for promotions this cycle.
Motion?
I would, I would make a motion to move forward with the three appointments that the city manager has put forward this evening.
So there's on your packet?
I'm looking for it, I'm looking for the.
Do you have it? Steve has it. If you could read that.
Oh, okay, so I beg your pardon, taking all of the glamour out of this. Okay, whereas the city charter provides that the city manager appoints certain deputy heads or officers subject to confirmation by the city council, it is hereby ordered that the following persons are appointed to the position indicated for the term to expire as indicated below. Police Officer Troy Beers, six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Deputy Police Chief Shum Willie, six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Communications Director Maura Condon, six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
To finally amend officer to chief, I think you misspelled, just so it's in the record.
I beg your pardon.
All those in favor? Thank you, congratulations.
Item sixteen, make a motion for a five-minute break, short, just to stand up, honestly, if you want to speak.
Say yes, John.
Just a five minutes.
Goodbye, Harris.
All right.
Electricals or something?
That would save me my wife's membership.
All right.
Michelle.
Did you want to, before or after this meeting?
After you start.
Okay, all right. We'll call the meeting back to order. Counselor Holland.
I just wanted to go back to the city manager's appointments. I'm thrilled to see elevation of existing people in the new positions. I think it's fabulous when somebody that's been working for the city ends up getting promoted, and I love that, and I've seen that time and time again through your restructuring. I think that's fabulous. The one thing I would just like to say about that is that I would like to see some sort of a uniformity or fairness on the jobs that are posted outside compared to the jobs that aren't posted at all. Some sort of balance to that, whether it be post with inside the city and then perhaps at that point go outside if you think it's necessary, but I would like to see some balance in jobs that are advertised for outside people and jobs that aren't advertised at all. I'd just like to see some balance in that.
Yeah, happy to, you know, I think this has been a piece where I feel like we're very blessed here to have kind of leadership from all sides of the organization. And it's a balance with the chief of police. That was really important, I think, that we made that public, and, you know, we had some good external candidate on that one. It was a difficult decision. I think we've ended up at a good place for it. The communications run, obviously, was a little more internal and some of our other ones as well. And, you know, but I should also say, you know, we've had, we had a HR specialist who went through a pretty rigorous, you know, some ones that you're not seeing here that are also coming in. We had our assistant planner, you know, external posted jobs. We had the assistant code enforcement officer. Obviously, we talked about a lot of these positions in the, so they're not coming here for council appointment, but they are going out into, you know, not just internal. There's also been, like, our Public Works Administrator was an internal piece. So there has been a mix of these, you know, when there's somebody that's pretty clear that's ready to step up into a leadership role. In some ways, like, they're sort of being promoted to take over a piece in a lot of ways, whether it was Sue and Tina stepping in at some pretty difficult times in a transition phase to really step up to the plate. They were, you know, they were sort of redesigning the role together to make that internally. So it is, it is a mix. I had originally thought of being a little bit more, you know, every single one needs to go posted. It's not required, but, you know, in an ideal world, I think we could be there, but there is an enormous amount of, you know, items we have to tackle, so, but definitely noted.
Yeah, I just, my thinking is this, is that if there's some system that, in the restructuring, that we could look inside, and obviously, you've chosen inside, which is fabulous, but if we could look inside first.
Yeah.
And do our very best to look at the people that have worked in the city before we go to the next step. I, in the end, people within the city have enjoyed the promotions, and I like that, but I'd like to see maybe a little stronger system of looking inside without going outside, and then if you go outside, go outside with every position or every key position, department head position, some sort of system. That's my only thought. I like the end result, but I think that we should come up with some way to look at our own people first.
Thank you. Okay, council order, item, agenda item 15, council order number 082402, appointment of city officials by the city council, reappointments for the Arbor Commission. Have the things in your packets. What is your pleasure?
I move we... Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yep, please.
Whereas the city charter or statutes provide that the following officials be appointed by the city council, and whereas several of the appointments made by the city council expire at midnight on June 30th, 2024, it is hereby ordered that the following persons be appointed to the position indicated for a term to expire as indicated below. Arbor Commission members' current term to expire 6/30/2024, request to repoint until 6/30/2025. Sandy Walchek, Albert Harmon, Amy Reisman, Tabitha White, Jamie Lambert, Mary Blackstone, Jay Barnes, Ian Drummond, Teresa Davis. So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item 16, council order number 082403, request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for the Surrey Road water main replacements.
Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Mike Harris, Public Works Director. I just want to take a really quick second before we get into this piece. Say that we'll pay for the playground. We'll take care of it. I'm not going to let that playground have to be a worry spot for the kids and the parents and everybody else, so I'll work with you, the recommission, or wherever we need to, and we'll get it done. So just please.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. So while I'm here, the first item is we are looking to replace a section of water main on the Surrey Road. So it's a combination of two different things. It's replacing some water main and then it's adding some new water main. So we're going to start at the fork of the Surrey Road in Main Street, and we'll be replacing some water main, and then when we get up toward Westwood Hills, the current water main runs behind the first row houses cross-country, and it's a concrete asbestos line, and we've had multiple breaks up there. So what we're going to look at doing is putting the new main along the Surrey Road and then abandoning in place that cross-country run. And so you'll have new, new water main along the Surrey Road for Westwood Hills, Hillside, and Mountain View Drive. Did I miss anything? And so we put that project out to bid. We had five bidders, and the low bid came in from Sargent Corporation in the amount of $2,990,000. The project is funded through the State Drinking Water Revolving Fund, and it's ready to go. We just need you to approve us being able to award that contract to Sargent Corporation at the price that they have proposed.
Could you tell us what the total bid alternative means as it's sort of added to the base bid?
Okay, so, and I, you would have to answer, tell me what they were, but basically, when the, when the project goes out to bid, you have the base project that you know you absolutely have to do, and then you have bid alternatives that you would like pricing on so that if the bid comes in lower or under, then you can also incorporate the bid alternates and get those things done as well. So Reggie, you can probably talk about what those bid alternates are.
So some of those bid alternates were, oh, Reggie, one's off. Water Department Superintendent, sorry. So there was the difference between HDP pipe and duct wire pipe, and we are going with the HDP. It is significantly cheaper. There's adding in services. There's also the cross-country, or not the cross-country section, I apologize. The loop section, then, is at the top of Mountain View Drive and Hillside Drive. So we currently have no water main there, and I would like to loop that, but we've got some other work to do on that portion, so that, that addendum item will be settled, signed until we can get, or if we can even get that part.
So we're working on a local, with a local landowner that owns property at the top of that road to do some sort of land swap or acquire their property to allow us to loop the water system. And what that means when we talk about looping the water system is typically when you have, like, a Christmas tree effect where you have water mains that go off and then they deadend, well, the dead end of those mains are subject to stagnation and sitting there not, well, not, and so then, you know, team is required to go out, flush hydrants and do whatever to make sure that water moves and it doesn't stagnate in the pipe. So when you can loop, I'm sorry, when you can loop a couple of mains together, it keeps that water constantly flowing, you don't have any stagnation going on. That's what we're attempting to do at the top of that.
So the 2.9 includes the loop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me make sure. Yes, it does. So the base price was $2,658.4, and then the bid alternates were $331, and then the total bid was $2,990, so $2,990, including the bid alternates.
Is there any questions in the council?
Two questions. Just, can you give me a sense of how many households this is serving, and a little bit more about the State Drinking Revolve Fund and how this fits in with, we've been talking about capital investment plans and, and the timing and how we're going to pay for it, just to get that full context before we spell $3 million?
As far as how many people it serves, that type of thing, I'm going to allow it to Reggie.
I was going to say.
I don't know. I'm just going to tell you upfront. Typically, the way the State Revolve Fund works is it's typically a low-interest loan that you take advantage of, that you approve for, and there's usually some sort of principal forgiveness involved. I don't know the actual numbers on this project because I just took over as Public Works Director. It's been going on long before I got into this role. But that's typically, it's not a grant, so it's going to be a debt service that would be taken on as part of the enterprise fund for the water company.
Okay, that's, that's why, because it's the enterprise fund, okay.
But it says it's already funded, so have we already borrowed the money? Have we already awarded the money?
We've been awarded.
Yeah.
And we've approved it?
I don't know. I'm new to this gig.
Or because it's the water company, maybe we don't.
I believe it is, but I don't want to.
Because this project's been on the pipeline for how long?
I can't imagine that you'd go to bed without the money, the funding, but.
Yeah. According to brand, we were good to go.
I believe.
But that doesn't mean it was, it was approved, so I'll have to check. I'll go, I'll go back in the council.
Yeah, we had a, we had a council meeting where they showed, we showed all the debt service.
Yeah.
So it's probably on that. I just don't have to believe in it.
That was all that.
Yeah, I remember, this is part of the budget process, we had the SWRF.
Yeah.
On there.
Yeah.
My assumption that this was, yeah, approved from previous councils going out to bid, but that was probably before my time.
I just assumed it, but when you asked the question, it made me rethink it.
Yeah. It definitely wasn't in the budget, but yes.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award.
Don't go ahead, that's my, we'll do a discussion.
The Surrey Road water main replacement to Sergeant for a total of $2,998,000.
Second.
Discussion, you needed the rest of your question answered correctly.
I, he's got his calculator going, I thought, that just kind of a range of, get a sense of.
I think he's playing.
Households or businesses served.
He's doing online poker, I know it.
It's around 75.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Quick question. As part of the motion, it was to allow the city manager to sign the notice of intent to award. Do we need to have that in the motion, or is it just?
Yeah, we always do.
Yeah, so I think we need a friendly amendment.
Nate's auditors won't like it if we don't.
Amend my motion to include allowing, empowering the city manager to sign the bid.
Notice of intent to award.
Notice of intent, intent to award the bid. Got all that?
Second, your note.
It's tomorrow.
You accept the amendment?
I accept it.
Okay, further discussion?
Mike, I'd like to compliment you. The previous person that held your role, when it come to bid before the council, we would only get the selected bid. We wouldn't get a true story. And I would continually have to drag that information out of the previous person in your position. And I noticed that you laid everything out of who bid and what the price was, and there's no guesswork here, and thank you. That is a huge... Oh!
I'm not going to take that credit. Evy put that together for me.
Well.
I asked her for it.
You stood in the right spot, but this is awesome, because before, we would have to drag this information out of all of the bids. We couldn't get real numbers, or that was the experience that I had. And, but this is wonderful, thank you so much. So I guess you're responsible for the next one, too?
No.
Oh.
That would be me.
All right.
The memo on the sand bid is going to be Adam, and the memo on the safety is me.
Okay.
So that's where we're at with all that. Thank you to Evy for doing a wonderful draw.
This is good information that we don't have to drag.
And one thing that you need to not worry about with me is dragging information either, because I would be happy to give it to you.
Because wait till the next one that he did.
I'm hoping it was a PowerPoint.
Does anyone have any questions on this item? $3 million, okay. Discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, item 17, council order number 082404, request of the Public Works Director to extend the current winter sand and road gravel contract.
Yeah, so I actually kind of wish Adam was here for this, but he's on, he's off, so I'll do the best I can. But the basic gist of it is the contractor was put out to bid previously, and the contractor that got the contract, KJ Dugus, was at $45 a yard, and the other bidder was at $6 a yard. And the current contractor reached out and said that they would hold that price for this year at $45 a yard. So Adam's recommendation to me, which I support, would be to extend that bid. Ken Dugus has done a great job for us. He's been very responsive to us whenever we've had any kind of issues. You can see from the previous bid that the next closest bid was $6 as opposed to the $45. Given the inflation and the amount of cost that's going on with everybody rising and incurring, I was surprised and happily surprised that Ken is actually agreeing to hold that price for us. I think it's a benefit for us, and so I recommend that we extend that bid.
Just a quick note, because it was my own learning curve, and maybe for folks listening as well, you know, I kind of thought of this as like an oil commodity, you know, there could be all kinds of, but they're coming out actually to our facilities, screening our stuff, you know, and they, we've had a very good relationship with them. In the past, on this piece, you know, if we were to go back out to bid, you know, this current one could change, and, you know, it's much likelier that we get a higher price on this, so that's why we're stick, want to stick with this current one. As you can see, Mike and Adam and Reggie, they're all about the bids and getting good prices here, so.
There's nothing in our ordinance that requires us to go to bid for things like this, we can.
It's a current contract, you can ask for anything.
Yeah, then the, the current contract extension's kind of where it's at on, yeah, if we were to do a new item, we found RFP, three different bids, it's kind of the previous process you just saw, so we just want to extend the contract to current pricing, so. And if there's a lot more price variability on an item, I would just add a personal desire to get additional bids requested, if it was more of a commodity-type item that, you know, you bought gas one year, I wouldn't just lock in the next price, it could be a dollar cheaper the next year.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the FY 2025 mineral screening contract, extend mineral contract to KJ Dugus, the contract amounts to be funded from the Highway Department operating budget account, pending in 5 months, 35.
It's a 24 contract, right?
Yes, FY 2024, yeah.
No, you're right, it is.
It is 25.
We're in 2025. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah.
What year is it now?
It's 2024 now, but it's fiscal year 25.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
We're in the future.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Amend my amendment to remove my amendment.
Time. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Good, Rick, John, keep it.
You did, you did, I'm sorry, it was me. Okay. Item 18, council order 082405, request of the Public Works Director and Safety Officer to purchase additional safety equipment for safe working conditions.
Yeah, so, once I became Public Work Director, then, you know, I was responsible for more than just wastewater and wastewater personnel, and so, you know, now I have the other water and highway and whatever under my curfew as well, and so we, we had a couple of incidents, you know, water leaks that I was able to take part in. And so through seeing that, those processes in action, and through working with our new risk management officer, Thomas Canavan, has been become our risk management, and through talking with Reggie and Adam, and we kind of sat down after the water breaks, which John is acutely aware of, and.
Yeah.
And I just sat him down, and I was like, okay, what went right, what went wrong, and what do we need to change? And we sat down and we looked at everything, and one of the, one of the things that came out of that is we need to enhance our ability when we work in active traffic patterns to keep ourselves safe. And so for me, the core of that would be, one, proper signage. So we had during those water breaks, we had road code signs, but we didn't have enough, so one of the road signs was flooded road ahead, and the other sign was something else. And, you know, people see that, and it's not acutely clear that they shouldn't pass that. And then, you know, one of the things that, you know, I discovered, or we've talked about, was, you know, we don't have any light stands at night, so if we're working in a dark area, you're using headlights, you're using borrowed stuff, we shouldn't be doing that. It's not safe. We get, we borrow stuff, and we have the lighting we need, but we should own it, and we should have it available to us when we need it. And so this all came about because, you know, water has a enclosed trailer that they use for equipment, and so the thought process is that trailer should have everything we need during, for a water break or any other road incident, where we can just hook onto it, bring it. It's got signs, it's got the necessary tools, because that's one of the things you struggle with sometimes, is where is this wrench, where is that, where is this? So I would like to have the tools dedicated in the trailer, not to be used for anything else. And then the big ticket item, so you'll see it's a $64,000 ask. Well, $46,000 of that ask is actually for the portable streetlights, because when, when you're working, say, on Water Street or someplace like that, people don't always respect signs. And then you're dedicating extra manpower to be standing out there holding the flag and coordinating traffic, which is not necessarily effective sometimes either. So if you have streetlights that you can set up, people tend to respect streetlights. When the light's red, they stop, when the light's green, they go. And it allows you to use your manpower to work on the project that you're trying to take care of instead of assigning people to, or paying a flag company to come out there and fly for you. So I just really think that they are critical for us. And then the last piece of it, the Jersey barriers, they're plastic, so we can move them around easily, and then you can fill them with water to add weight to them. So that's not, that's not just for a road, working the road, that's if we, we have an open hole, or we have a construction area where we want to absolutely make sure that people know that they can't go through there, we can erect these things and, and know that people aren't going to move them and drive through them and things of that nature. And so when you're talking about this, this breakdown that you see in front of you, the light stands are three grand. The Jersey barriers are $378 apiece, I'm requesting eight. The signs, for 48 signs and 24 stands, so those signs would be road code signs, works on ahead sign, alternating traffic signs, one lane road ahead sign, and then the be prepared to stop signs, and then 24 stands to stand, you know, put the signs up with. And that's $9,600 for the 48 signs and all the stands. And then for the tools that we think would be necessary, the tools come to a total of $1,820. And then the big ticket item is the portable traffic lights, which we had. So the reason why your packet is so big on this item is because I wanted to get three quotes from everybody up front so that I can pull the trigger on this soon. I don't want to drag it out. So we did the pre-work, because winter's coming too, and so I just want to make sure that the guys have what they need and were prepared, because that's when a lot of the water breaks happen, is in the wintertime. So I want, that's why I gave you the three bids and everything, so that if you guys go forward with this, then we're going to pull the trigger on it, like, coordinate a name, and then we're going to pull the trigger on buying this stuff. So the last piece of this is, this wasn't budgeted for in their budgets. So wastewater happens to have a significant amount of money, actual real money in a bank account that we can use, and so I spoke to Charlie, and I spoke to Nate, and Adam, and Reggie. And so my idea was that, you know, wastewater will front the money to buy it out of the reserve, and then come the next budget season, Nate is going to set up a debt service line item in highway and a debt service line item in water to repay the reserve account from wastewater to cover that cost. And so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, on this one, so it's essentially budget neutral for the year, and I think once we get reconciled, as we talked about the reserve accounts, I think in an ideal world, Michelle, this is what you and Tammy were setting up. Wastewater continue to fund their reserves, but in an ideal world, the highway and, and water would also have those reserves so that we could do something like this, not pull it from additional taxes, and then next year replenish these funds. So in some ways, like, we're kind of on track to start doing this type of reserve funding, but this keeps it without affecting the budget cycle, but we still get to add these safety elements to the teams this year.
Any questions?
I mean, certainly not going to argue the need for this. What does it do for the reserve account in case something else goes wrong? What does this do for the reserve account if this is drawn down?
The reserve account is very healthy, several hundred thousand dollars in it, so $64,000 is not going to hugely impact that.
Okay, thank you.
And in our one-year infrastructure plan, there might be additional safety items that are larger ticket. Some, one of those. Some, one of those is a machine, uh, that's just, um, that, that might be in this category that we're currently renting for safety pieces. And so this is, you know, safety continues to be a priority, we have a new, uh, Safety Officer, who's actually our Fire Code Officer, who we've promoted to also have this piece, just to, um, you know, he's going to be out there with Jim tomorrow on the stuff at Nolan Park that's been talked about, went through with Maine Municipal Association, some risk assessment stuff, so we continue to kind of prioritize uh, the safety element and try to make sure that we're on the ball here.
How many, uh, hours do you suspect those portable traffic lights will get per month or per year?
A lot. I mean, I can't give you a number because we haven't never had them. But if you look at, so for example, tomorrow, there's going to be a lane closure on Bayside Road, right, because we're ditching, right? So, you know, you're going to have flaggers out there, you know, to close that lane, where instead we could just set up the traffic lights, and people could alternate, and we could do the work, and not have two other guys standing out there holding flags and directing traffic, and also being in the traffic pattern where they could get hit if somebody's not paying attention or something along those lines.
Like, the, the equivalent, uh, hours of flaggers getting paid for doing it would maybe be the same amount to cover
Probably.
the $64,000 within the useful length of the
Oh, yeah, 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 easily. $46,000, if you look at all the roadwork we do, look at all the water main breaks we've had over the past few years, you know, um, so another example of a project that we have coming up is we want to do the drainage project at the bottom of Foster Street, where you have all that ice buildup every winter, and you have to have the grader go out there and scrape it and all that. So, you know, we're looking to cure that problem, um, and these traffic lights will be perfect for directing traffic while we're trying to get that work going.
Yeah, I'd also note, I, you know, we had a team building day and a picnic, um, last month, and get to meet a lot of the great folks from the Highway Department, and kind of ask, hey, what do you need? And this was mentioned by a few of them, was this would be a big help. You know, I think, uh, there's a cost element too, but you could, you can rent these types of things, and I think, uh, I think on occasion we have, but it's also when you have the ability to do that, something happens, you go out there, you set them up, you know, as opposed to, now you're trying to call around to people for these things, you get them there, and you're more inclined just to have people flagging it in out there. This seems like, um,
Especially at night, like, 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 water main breaks at night are already hell, and then if it's in the winter, it's more hell. And then, you know, you have to worry about people paying attention, distracted drivers. You know, and part of this is the tools and the signs and things like that, and so, you know, we need to build the right culture here to work safely. And that's what we're, that's what we've been doing, we're part of the SHAPE program, the city's part of the SHAPE program. You know, but part of it is sometimes you got to protect guys from themselves, right? Sometimes guys are just, and I was like that, so guys are just hard charging, and they see a problem, they're just going to go and fix it, and they don't necessarily regard whether they got gloves on, safety glasses on, hard hats on, steel-toed shoes, things like that. And also when you're working in the street, you know, they're not necessarily as cautious as they need to be when these people are driving around. And so, it's just, um, important.
Any other questions?
I'm all for this. I've heard from several people around town that the city isn't doing things right with signage and blockades and what have you. My question is this, could you explain this fuzzy math trick that's at the bottom of this memorandum?
Sure.
I'm not quite understanding, um, the purchase would be initially paid for from the reserve account from wastewater with a provision that a third of the cost would be returned to the reserve account from Highway and Water Departments 26 budget.
Yeah, because wastewater is responsible for a third.
So it should be two-thirds of the cost will be responded, be back.
Yeah, so a third each, so two-thirds total would be.
Okay, okay, so, um,
Yeah.
all three departments are going to kick in a third?
Exactly.
Okay, and your third's already paid for from wastewater, okay, all right. That was, I was struggling with, with that, but I'm all for it, I, I think that, um, having a, an emergency trailer to hook up to and go, and all of these things can be rented, well, a good part of them, but let's face it, the breakdowns are going to come at 5:30 on Friday night, when all the rental stores are closed, so I'm all for it.
Anything else? You have a motion?
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director and Safety Officer to purchase additional safety equipment for safe working conditions to the tune of?
$64,000.
$64,000. Do you need to award a specific bid now?
Nope, nope, I just need you to capture that the purchases initially from wastewater reserve and that in 2026.
Initially from the wastewater reserve account with the agreement that one-third of the cost will be reimbursed each to the highway, from the 2026 Highway and Water Departments budgets.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to stay, Mike, till the end? Keep you up there till the end, you don't want to stay?
Okay, Council Item 18, Council Order 082406, discussion and possible action for extension of the Moore Center lease, sponsored by Council Lions.
You know, Council Lions has sponsored this, I've, uh, this one's pretty straightforward, sorry my computer died, but I signed a lease extension last week, we were, uh, for the Moore Community Center, which I think was originally negotiated with Michelle, uh, the last time you, uh, were here. So Patrick's, uh, going to take the lead on kind of continuing negotiations that will hopefully finish by the end of the year. I needed just a little more time on this, so that's where we're at, I know, Michelle, you want to be involved in it too, if other city councilors, you know, want to be involved, please let me know, I think Patrick and I and Matt from the YMCA will start looking towards who also signed this lease extension, so it just kind of keeps things as is until the end of the year, and we'll start analyzing, um, that piece and report back to Council probably over the fall, and by the end of the year, get a new lease signed, so.
Thank you for answering all the questions I have.
Great.
So yes, I would like to participate in that if I could with you.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just, I think it's great, and, um, just the Moore Center and the, you know, as a parent of a young child, the family utilizes the Moore Center a lot, um, for that, and Friends in Action and everything, it's just a really important part of our community, and the services the city partners with nonprofits to provide, and, um, so, yeah, any and all participation from the city council is welcome, and, but I just told Charlie, like, you know, I'd like to be involved with this one.
I really appreciate it, I, that's a, that's a project, um, that's near and dear to my heart, and, um, and, you know, I don't think people realize how much the community and nonprofits use that building, and as it was meant to be. As I said, the senior center is there, and, um, you know, the coffee times with the seniors, and if you go in there at almost any time of the day, there's, there's an organization using it, and it's great, it's really great, so. I don't know, do we, you've already signed it, so there's no action.
I was just going to ask that question, what are we voting on here?
I don't know, I think that's why it's possible action, I don't know.
Well, you want to ratify?
Unless we want them to take it back.
You know, I think we could rat, yeah, ratify this, sure.
I think to be safe, we should vote to ratify the, the extension
Okay.
through the end of the year.
Make a motion.
A move that we ratify the, uh, extension of the Moore Center lease as signed by Charlie Pierce City Manager to run up and into through December 31st, 2024, as signed, um, as of the 7th of August, 2024.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item number 20, Council Order 082407, request of the City Assessor to create a senior tax stabilization program for FY 2025. And I am sorry about Friday, I just kept losing you, I apologize.
I had Tammy's phone right here.
I know, I know, I went through Holden and everything broke loose.
Oh, yeah, that's what happens.
Thank you.
Well, uh, good evening, City Assessor, Larry Gardner, and, uh, well, uh, I'm proposing a stabilization tax club, I don't know if it actually says that in the paper, I think it does, but, as, as we all know, uh, last year, um, there, we had 620, um, seniors who enrolled in the stabilization program, which froze the tax bills for every one of those based on the tax bill of the year before. And we, we, we also know that, uh, uh, last year was a pretty decent-sized tax increase for everyone except for the stabilization. People, because their taxes were froze based on their tax bill of the previous year. Well, um, I think as everyone who probably, uh, saw this right when it first came out with the stabilization program, almost everyone thought it was too good to be true. I'm going to have my taxes frozen for the rest of my life, as long as I own the house, and it's my principal residence. And, uh, so sure enough, that was too good to be true, um, because the state did not have enough money to pay for the program. The state was reimbursing every municipality the difference in the property tax bills. And they just miscalculated by way too much, so the, the state, uh, lawmakers, they repealed the program. And at first, we were told that they're, they're trying to come up with something like a stabilization two, maybe they were going to look at income now, where before they were not looking at income to, to do this. But, um, really nothing came out of, uh, the repeal that, um, would help these seniors. What I'm proposing here is something, it, it's called a tax club, there's, uh, there, there's a special law here in Maine that allows municipalities to have tax clubs, and it's meant for, um, well, the primary use of it is to allow people to pay their property taxes over time, and, uh, usually what you see with a tax club is, uh, is monthly payments, you pay a monthly portion of your tax bill, and, and even if you don't have your full, uh, payment made by the due date, as long as you're making monthly payments, you're okay. And, uh, but, uh, if you, if you miss one of those monthly payments, then you're out of the tax club, and all that interest you have to pay, um, that hasn't accrued. My proposal, if, if you accept it, uh, is to waive the, the interest for almost the entire fiscal year for, for only the, uh, stabilization folks, um, their tax bills, uh, because their, their actual tax bill amount last year was frozen based on the previous year, they're probably going to, every one of them will probably see an increase of like 30% or more, and, um, those that are not, that were not stabilized will probably see around a 10% increase. So it's, it's going to be very, very difficult for, for seniors who, who thought they had their taxes froze for the rest of their life, to now come up with a 30% increase in their tax bill. So I'm, I'm suggesting we consider having this flexibility that waives, um, the interest until June, and, and, and June is important because the tax collector has to be able to, um, send out tax lien notices. So, that's basically it, it's, it's waiving the interest, it's called the stabilization tax club, and it's waiving the interest if, if, if the first half is not paid on time, and then if, if, if the second half is not paid on time, it extends it until, um, June.
Can I ask a question? So lien notices go up in June, or liens go on in June?
Well, they
You do, I'm sorry.
Okay, Sue McClain, tax collector, and anything else you want to call me. So what was happening, or what I have been doing, is I've been trying to get the liens to be, uh, registered in June. And I did that, I was doing that, because if any of these go to foreclosure, the way it was working out was this would allow us to get the foreclosure notices done before Christmas, because it was working out, people were getting foreclosure notices to be due Christmas, it was awful. So, um, I have said that I can push that back a month, I, I can, uh, push it forward, I guess, a month, so that I can do them, so they're posted in July. And that brings it to like November Thanksgiving time, if it were to go to a foreclosure. So I have been doing it so that they're posted in June, but I can push it back, and, I mean, I would have to push everybody's back, not just the stabilization ones, so.
So lien notices, they have to go out within a certain period of time from commitment, right?
Yes.
And that's nine months, how many months is it?
Yeah, I think so, it's, um, you have so many, I, I don't have the figures right in front of me, but it's probably like nine, 10 months, I think. You, you have, like, this year I had from April, I could start them in April, based on the commitment date. And I put it off so that in May, I send out the 30-day demand notices, and then that to be effective in June. I technically have until the, um, August, till the next commitment date.
Oh, okay.
Pretty much. It basically, as long as it's within, I think it's like the last four months, I can do that at any time my liens in there, as long as I do it before the 12-month mark of when the commitment was originally done, so.
Questions? So in this case, you would send out the notices in June, and you'd put the liens on in July?
In July, yeah.
And then they would come due 18 months?
Yes, after that, yeah.
So, as I understand it, for this tax club, in essence, it gives folks the whole year to pay off their taxes
Yes.
um, without any interest being applied, or them, um, being, you know, and avoiding the, as long as they pay off by the end of the year, um, rather than having to pay it in installments as normal, otherwise you would, um, then they're, they would be considered up to date with their taxes, and they wouldn't risk, um, the lien process for failure to pay property taxes. And this is for 632 people?
620.
20, and, um, and just because they're eligible doesn't mean they, they get, they're eligible, but they may or may not sign up. We talked about this a little bit, uh, at Friday's meeting, um, for the Finance Committee, and, um, I think, I was just trying to think of things that, for the folks that weren't, councilors that weren't there, things that I thought were helpful. But, yeah, so, and we understand that we have, uh, we've looked at, if we need to, our TAN can extend to cover the, you know, not, you know, the delayed payment of these. the delayed payment of these revenues, tax revenues, if need, even if it's all six hundred and twenty folks signed up for it. So the city, I understand, has the capacity to cover this for the year to provide this benefit to the folks that kinda had the rug pulled out from under them on the stabilization. And this tax club is an in-state statute and it's used by other communities in other contexts as well.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think the total liability is, you know, if all sixty-five and over for the property tax would be around two million, which is around the TAN authority. It's difficult to model something like this without, you know, doing a lot of assumptions, which may not work out. But I would highly doubt that that'll be the full liability that everybody will hold until that date. It could be much significantly less. And it's just the interest that's being held so it's not penalizing people if they can't pay right away. It's given that. But it's not, you know, it's not an enormous break. It's not, it's not like the stabilization program in itself. So we don't expect a flood of all six twenty trying to take advantage of this program for relief. It's really for those targeted to those who, you know, are gonna get this bill and really feel like they need more time, but they, you take more time, you accrue interest. So at least it gives them that piece. It's not ideal, but it feels, it feels like as much as we can do for this one.
And Steve, Councilor Howen, brought up a good point on Friday as well that, you know, there may be, you know, this is a, this tax club might be something that the city could use for other folks and other circumstances. And, you know, I think the thought is, is well, if we see how this one, you know, see how this plays out for this coming year, maybe it's something the council can revisit to think about other folks that may, it may make sense to have created a tax club for.
Yeah, and there's also the, if I'm wrong, Larry, and there's always, was it a hardship clause, I believe, that really at any time, the council can?
Yeah, the hardship abatement.
Hardship abatements that we could consider, which I think for anybody listening can always be considered, even apart from this club. But as opposed to that whole, like, very separate application, which has to go here on an individual basis, this is a little bit more of a group type, so.
There's also the deferment program. We currently have two enrolled in the state deferment program. And the deferment program is like a reverse mortgage. The state agrees to pay your property tax for you, but you have to have reasons why. You can't just say, oh, I want the state to pay. It has to be based on your income and your expenses.
Yeah, there's a whole application process.
Yeah, it's almost like a hardship abatement.
Yep.
And the state will pay the property taxes, but they want their money back plus interest when you no longer own the property. And so we have two of those.
Yeah, and I have sent out applications when people have called to ask what kind of help is available. I've sent that one. There's a bunch. I say a bunch. There's a few other veterans ones and the hardship abatements. I send them everything I can. So, I mean, if they call and ask, I do get it out to them.
And I believe we're gonna send out a separate, if you approve it, we would send out a separate flyer.
Yeah, we're talking about sending out a flyer that fits in with that tax bill for the, those that have had stabilization. A kind of an application to apply. Otherwise, we're not gonna know who wants it. Now, I don't know how many of these are escrow paid either. And that, so that would be a moot point because those would continue to pay the bill as they should anyway on the installment dates.
Just have to pay the bank.
Yeah, well.
They'll have to pay the bank.
Anyway.
Anyway, because if it's an escrow, the bank's gonna pay it no matter what.
Right.
So that's kinda one of the other reasons we don't expect the full two million. I should also note to Larry and Sue and Jana, you know, Larry had this great idea, I think, coming up here. It's, you know, really shows the great public service work that thinking about the people of Ellsworth, I know, for Sue and the kind of, the mechanics of this are not easy. Nobody's getting paid more for adding these extra slips and making sure it's in there. And then it's kind of a manual process to our tax collectors who are here. So, and then Jana was, you know, on whiteboards orchestrating all the little pieces of this. So really glad to be working with this, this great. And it was a great memo. I think it was my favorite of the bunch.
Well, I should say, Sue gets all the calls.
Yes, I do.
And this will be good, you know, we will share them as they come in.
Really?
You can send some to me, you know.
It's on the record.
Yeah. You're in the minutes. So can I ask just one more? Oh, go ahead.
Are there any barriers or anybody who fits this category can just say, yes, I want this and they kinda, they get it? Or is it a rigorous?
I think if they qualified for the stabilization, then they can have this. They can do this. This is a one-year thing, though, this, for this one tax bill because we, there's a lot of work behind it. It's not just a quick, easy click-a-button, so.
Yeah, put an extra code in, the software.
It's not that.
So that I have this, so what we're gonna do is send out an application. People can sign up for this. And then they'll have like ten months to pay their bill monthly. So are you gonna tell them you have to pay this month?
No, what we're looking at is initially, we thought twelve monthly payments or however many it works out to ten. But then we decided that as long as they got it paid by the end of the year or by the June date, then we would waive it, waive the interest. But what's, the way it's gonna have to work is when we get a payment in, there'll be a note on the account that will pop up automatically that says they're in that program. So we will go in, apply the payment, and waive the interest. That's the only way we can do it and make it work fairly for everybody and not get them kicked out and, you know. The other way would be a mess.
Just a thought. If you don't have at least a minimum amount that could be paid, they could just come in and pay a couple dollars a month, save their money and the interest and they pay it all at the end.
Right.
Because not everybody that's a senior citizen that's in the stabilization program is.
Needs.
Has needs, yes, monetary needs. So I just, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but I would recommend at least a monthly minimum that they have to pay, you know, a percentage or something.
I mean, we can. It's not, it's not, it's not gonna change anything as far as what we have to do. It's not gonna add more work to us. We're gonna be doing the same process. The, all the work is coming, getting it set up initially. So we can. We don't have the paperwork drawn up yet. We can add something.
I'll leave that up to you and try to read it.
Yes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying because it's not a, we're expecting a tax bill. Just, I don't know. Let me think about it.
So, I mean, being able to save money until last minute would be helpful, but also saving paperwork and clerical work for a lot of these people would probably be helpful to not have to think every month about doing so. I mean, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work.
It's the thing about the modeling, too. It's like if there's not a ton of uptake, I'm not as concerned about that. If six hundred and twenty people show up and are trying to get this, the minimum and requiring more of those things would be a good idea. So, but yeah, let me, let me just simmer on that for a bit.
Nate, Burkhard pulled a bunch of figures out of Trio, which was passed out. I think it's in your, I believe this one in the packet. No, this wasn't. But last year's, the people who were stabilized, of the six hundred and twenty, twenty-four accounts of even those that had their taxes stabilized, twenty-four of those went to the lien process. Yeah, so it's.
And then, but it ranges anywhere from fifty thousand to nine hundred thousand dollar values?
Some of those are way over the average value for the city of Ellsworth. And that's, like I said before, the state, when they repealed it, everyone was hoping they'd come up with a stabilization two and base it on income.
Right.
You know, for the ones who really need it. And they couldn't agree to get that done.
Is that, doing something like that at a municipal level, would that be such an undertaking?
Yeah, but we would have to eat that tax loss. It would be reimbursed.
Or just a club like we're talking about, but also based on income?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
I think if.
It's very broad that, I think it's five oh five, thirty-six, five oh five. But yeah.
It's in our, it's in here.
That's right. That's what it says.
I've been avoiding the tax club wording book laws. So I couldn't tell you. Who knows?
Well, maybe after this, I'll kinda consider that next council as we go in, just to model out, you know, if we wanted to make it for seniors that make less than forty thousand dollars a year or whatever, the piece would, would that, or their property values that are X, if you want to stabilize them, maybe it would be financially manageable for the city. Maybe it would be seven hundred thousand and then you also have to tell me where I'm gonna find that.
Maybe that's a good discussion during the budget process.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we do pass this, it'll be a good opportunity to learn about the nuts and bolts of how this might work. And, and yeah, and to your point, I'm sure there'll be some people that will take advantage of it that don't need to and, you know, hold on to their dollars. But I think for every one of them, there's gonna be people that this makes a big difference. And it's one year and it's, you know, we can cover it. Worst case, if everyone deals with it. That's why I think it makes sense.
No, I think it's a great program for those that need it. I think it's nice of you to think like that, you know, to take care of. That's what we do, right? Councilor Howen?
I mentioned this at the finance. I'm all for helping the seniors. And I think that it's a tough situation for many people. I just wonder if, and I said this earlier, if it could be a little broader to include anybody sixty-five or older. And I realize I'm reaching out here when I say that, but I just would, I hate to single out without putting the age to it, if you will. It is for one year and I just have to wonder if there isn't some way to include all seniors in the offering, not some seniors.
Would you include seniors that are not residents?
No, I believe that this should be for.
The residents?
Yeah.
With a homestead exemption. I would, I would guess that there's very few seniors that didn't sign up for that stabilization program to get a tax freeze for the rest of their life. Even though they didn't, I don't, I don't think one thought it would last. But you'd almost have to be a fool not to sign up and get it in case it did keep going.
And they did benefit for a year, so there is that, but.
So I imagine every property owner, senior sixty-five or older that is a resident homestead exemption receiver probably did sign up for this. We don't know the age of every property owner. But I, the word was out.
Well, and it sounds like an application will go out with tax bills as well.
Yeah, that, yeah. So they would have to sign up for it.
Gather some data for years, see what it looks like for people.
I have one thing. Sorry. I'm not a tax expert whatsoever, but in terms of just process for these guys, I think opening it up to all seniors sixty-five plus is a great idea. But I don't think we have enough time to explore. So like, you know, we have Trio and Vision in these systems, but it doesn't say in there if a household is sixty-five plus in our attribute data that we collect. It also doesn't say what the household income is. So if we were to create those parameters around a program, we, next budget cycle in June would be the perfect time to discuss that because then we could actually have time to send out an application of that magnitude, asking for that detailed data and collecting it. And then similarly, going through the process that the state did when they created their program, we would go through those applications and be able to make sure that there was, yeah, homestead exemption, that it matched up, that we had all the accurate information that we needed to get them submitted into a program. Right. So a little bit of credentials, you know, making sure that they met the credentials of the program. But we don't have that data on file right now. So I think, you know, between June and August, when the commitment's done and the tax bills are gonna go out, would give us a lot of time to do publicity, get the notice out to the residents of Ellsworth, collect that data, and then set up that program if the council wished to do that at that time.
We would also need to take a look, sorry. We would also need to take a look at how Trio handles it. Right now, we're kinda going, for this one, we're going around Robinson's Barn and setting it up kind of our own way. But if we had any more than this, I think we would have to look at using Trio software. And there's a reason I haven't brought it up until this point. It's, it's, it's easy enough to set up, but it's very difficult to track. So I don't, you know, we really have to have some good talks about it before I wanna do that. And maybe there's a way around it. I don't know, but.
What would you like?
I'd like to move to approve the request of the city assessor to create a senior tax stabilization club program for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion?
And that's as outlined in the memo. I wanna make sure again that we're capturing the six twenty.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you.
I've gotten quieter as the day and this evening has gone on.
As outlined.
As outlined in the memo so that we're clear that it's those six hundred and twenty-one or six hundred and twenty people that we're talking about.
Okay.
Accepted.
Accept the amendment.
It was very friendly.
Friendly acceptance.
As amendments go.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, almost. Last but not least, council order number zero eight, two, four, zero, eight, request of the facilities manager to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for lead paint abatement in the fire department bunk rooms as part of a capital improvement.
Evening all. Jim McLean, facilities maintenance. As you probably all remember, budget season, put in a capital request for the, some work to be done downstairs in the fire department bunk rooms and office space for moisture issues. And this is step one of that process, getting the identified lead paint mediated. It took a little doing. There's not a lot of licensed lead abatement companies in the state of Maine. There are several actually, but not a lot up here. They're all Portland South. But I did manage to contact one, two, three, four, five, six, seven companies, three of which submitted bids you have in your packets. I don't have any information and I can't give you any recommendation other than the low bidder. I don't know. One of the companies has worked for E L Shea. I don't recall which company it was. Other than that, I Other than that, I can't give you any kind of recommendation.
And the low bidder is Lakeside?
Pardon?
The low bidder is Lakeside?
The low bidder is Lakeside. They did submit, Lakeside did submit quite a packet. All three companies did come up here, actually, four did, but the three did come up, we walked through, we talked, they measured their wear. I think I submitted the bid specs in the packet to you folks about it being a two-part project, going to do parts, so we have them to relocate fire personnel. It, from the areas that are going to be abated, then it'll allow me to coordinate with the spray foam company, come back in, they're going to apply their product, I'll be able to sheet rock it, finish it, and then the abatement company will come in and do the rest of the rooms that the fire personnel can move back into. So it's going to be a little bit of a drawn-out process, but I kind of want to get on their calendar sooner rather than later, because they're all two or three months out before they can start. So no time like the present.
Can you remind us how much we had budgeted for this budget?
Did you cut it?
Yeah, it's printed out in the hole right there.
Huh? No, 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 did you cut the capital, did you cut, was that one of the ones you cut?
I don't think, I don't think so.
You have a reputation.
Texas chainsaw Charlie over here.
Technically, we cut it.
No, I don't think you cut that one, actually. I think it was sixty-three thousand. I don't have the particulars, but it was, I think I, but, I think, actually, I think N E S. Pardon?
I think it was sixty-three five.
Sixty-three five? N E S is what I came out first, and I based my capital request on the amount that they gave us. So the low bidder would actually be less than, which freed me up a little bit of, it's a pretty tight request, so one or two things go wrong and I'll be in trouble. But if all goes well, based on the numbers that I got from a spray foam company, my estimation on sheet rock, the willingness of some of the fire personnel to help out, doing some of the demolition, and Charlie's willingness to work weekends and nights, it should come in on the budget, hopefully.
Just a quick question, you referenced the timing, what is the timeframe, and is, was there a big difference in availability between one company and the other, or they're all in that next couple of months that you mentioned?
They're all within a couple of months.
Okay, great.
I should just note for Jim is actually coming in on weekends, I showed up today and Monday, and either there is a serial killer here, because there's so much plastic on everything over the weekend. Our Jim was fixing stuff now that the chimney's been repaired, he's fixing outside of Kerry's office, he's building a new, we see a giant hole in the wall over here, we're bringing back the utilities coordinator so that all of our customer service.
No, that's what Chick-fil-A is doing.
Oh, even better, even better.
Revenue generating.
Uh, there's, if you've been out of the fire station, there's, you orchestrated getting that vent exhaust system that you all authorized before the budget piece, that thing is awesome and magnetizes straight to it. Um, it's, uh, there's an incredible amount of work that he's doing around here and orchestrating, so we're getting a lot, a lot of value.
Thank you.
You've met my wife, now you know why I work weekends.
That's okay, because I come in with him.
What would you like? Move to approve the request for facilities manager to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for lead paint abatement in the fire department bunk rooms as part of a capital improvement project, and award the bid to Lakeside Concrete Cutting Abatement Professionals for a grand total of forty-two thousand four hundred fifty dollars.
Great motion.
Second.
Wow. Casey would be so proud.
Any additional discussion?
Sorry, Matt helped me wordsmith it.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And finally, item twenty-two, council order number zero eight two four oh nine, discussion on possible action on sending the question of opting into adult recreational marijuana and medical use marijuana, marijuana, marijuana to referendum, sponsored by Councilor Stein.
It's late.
It's.
It's late, it's gone hard.
Uh, you'll recall last month, we decided to form a working group, which was made up of committee and commission staffers to discuss what it would look like, what the referendum wording would look like, and to briefly discuss some of the main concerns. We brought in folks like Chief Ears and Fire Chief Scott to, to get some initial concerns about safety and fire hazard things, and what an ordinance could look like, and what sort of information we, public, owed it to the public to make public before the referendum vote, and then how to word that. And obviously, Patrick with his background, background in working on projects like this for sure, he had a lot of input, and Matt as well, so I'll let Matt take over.
Yeah, so, and as John said last month, there was an agreement to really send this referendum, just kind of give staff time like a month to kind of organize everything, get some more information together. And so this action tonight is requesting to approve of the wording to go on the ballot to send it to referendum. So at the end of the memorandum, we got for this item, there's the recommended motion, which has the wording that I'm suggesting move forward, so there'll be two questions on the ballot. This is after discussions with Tina, who's our journalist, her social services director, but also helps run the elections. So there'll be two questions addressing specific uses to adult use and then medical uses. And the first question would read, shall the city of Ellsworth vote to authorize the municipality the operation of adult-use cannabis stores, provide they operate in compliance with all applicable state and local requirements? And the second question would read, shall the city of Ellsworth vote to authorize the municipality operation of medical cannabis registered caregiver retail stores and registered dispensaries, provide they operate in compliance with all applicable state and local requirements? So what both these questions does is underneath adult use and medical use, there are about four uses that a municipality can opt into. Playoffs in your packet, there were some other options of how to word this, and that was causing some issues, as written in the memo, for the company that kind of prints our ballots and organizes them. And, you know, if we'd set it up in a way where you have all four uses as one question for adult use, and there was just a checkbox for yes and no, the machines would have a hard time reading that, and so the staff would have to hand count those, and hand counting them during a presidential election did not seem ideal or efficient or accurate. So then there was the conversation about how do we kind of condense those into two easy questions for the voter to understand, as well as the machines to understand. And so the suggestion is if only we vote on essentially one use, but it's one use for adult-use cannabis and two similar uses for medical marijuana, which is the retail sales for adult use, and then, not the retail sales, but like the storefront uses for medical marijuana. And, you know, allow the community to give feedback to the council in that case, you know, if they're interested in seeing the expansion of marijuana uses in the city, they'll vote yes on these two, and then there could be longer public engagement and education processes for the three other uses for adult-use cannabis, so cultivation, testing, and the third one, that's why I'm blanking on right now.
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing, thank you. And then similar for the other medical uses, which the public may not be as familiar with, whereas retail stores, there's not too much education on them necessarily, people are pretty familiar, it's kind of like a liquor store, you'd go in and buy weed instead of alcohol.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, yeah. And so, so that's the recommendation from staff. In your packet, there are provided, again, the longer-form question that the ballot machine would have a difficult time reading, but then also some other sample warrant articles that MMA provides to municipalities. And what we're suggesting is actually one of those, but it would just change the process a bit, instead of the referendum voting on all of the potential uses that could be brought to the city, it's focusing on specific ones.
So we could, so once that's voted yes or no, and if it is voted yes, then would there be the discussion of the ordinance, of how many can be, and where they would be, that all happens after the vote, correct?
Yes, and that would be specifically for the uses that were voted on.
Okay.
And we'll come back to, obviously, the council for approval of, of ordinance?
Yeah, go through planning board for the original drafting and recommendation, and then come to the council for the final vote.
Do you anticipate, remember John's excellent flow chart, do you anticipate the public engagement between now and November to include kind of concepts of where we think these retail stores could possibly be located?
So one of the workshops is on land use and code enforcement, and so in that presentation, I do plan to go into, you know, ideally, kind of where they make sense for the city, and for the, match the characters, like a neighborhood zone, they would not be allowed very likely.
Yeah.
But then commercial or urban, there's a better chance that you would allow use like this within those.
Okay, yeah, I just think that would be, I like the, you know, focusing on the one use, it's a way to help kind of begin the education process, and then if, and if the voters approve it, great, and we can, and if they don't, then there you have it. But I think it's also if they do approve it, then the council can, you know, like Matt said, further engage with, well, does, do we want these other types of businesses? And then the other question is, you know, do we need to send those to referendum, or would the council, you know, we do have the authority to, you know, pass those things on our own, but I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. But I think focusing on the retail side makes a lot of sense, simplifies it, and ultimately, this lets the, hopefully, it provides enough time for anyone that's interested and wants to learn about, that we do a good job of educating the public on that.
Yeah, I can just read off the four workshop dates and what we'll cover in each one, for the record. So August twenty-eighth will be the first workshop, and that'll be with our fire department and police department, talking about the effect or possible effects on emergency services provided by the city by allowing these uses. September twelfth is the land use and code enforcement workshop, again, we'll kind of go over potential locations in the city that these could be allowed, what other pressures it puts on code enforcement for inspections. September seventeenth will be with our clerks department, which will go over the election process, what the ballot will look like, and there will be an information sheet that comes with the ballot too for this question, so there'll be more information on what each of the cannabis-related uses are. And then October tenth is more just an open listening session if there's any concerns that citizens still have, for us to collect that data.
Just note for Matt too, and the incredible job he's doing, you can just hear all the workshops he just listed off, he's also involved in the courthouse process, he was involved in the main organics, may have workshops as well now with it, fairgrounds, all sorts of legal things, it's an incredible amount of work that he and these teams put together for these, so thank you.
Housing, transfers.
So, yeah, any questions?
Questions? What would you like?
So just to reiterate, Matt, your recommendation is that first suggested motion of wording, but.
My recommendation is that whole paragraph.
Could you clarify, please? That whole paragraph of the third?
Correct the suggested motion, move to place two warrant articles.
At the end of your memorandum, right?
Okay, so it's up above all of these, thank you.
Matt's was not the best memo.
Second place.
Second place.
Well, I mean, page ninety-eight or page one hundred and three tonight is where we're, what we're dealing with.
It's adult-use cannabis stores, as well as medical cannabis registered caregiver retail stores.
And dispensers.
And dispensers, registered dispensers.
So the, the, in cannabis, they call it seed to sale, so this is, you know, they track, the state tracks, it's all regulated from seed, like the cultivation, and then it goes through the, some of it will go through a manufacturing process, and ultimately, it goes to the, the retail storefront or the caregiver. And so what we're focusing on is just the, the sale side of the cannabis, you know, industry process.
Thank you for that clarification, so we're not looking at, at the grow.
Yeah, no grow, no manufacturing, no testing, and that's, if this does pass by popular vote, then that's something we can, we can visit later.
Cautious approach seems to make sense.
Take this as an indicator of, of the population's taste for this sort of thing?
It's also for, I think, you know, it's a big election year, there's this, there's the flag, I think's going to be on there, there's.
Three bond issues.
And then when you really put this out with all the multiple questions, it's like, are we really expecting, it's a lot, so get kind of the referendum, and we know we can go from there, and if we see a no, then that's kind of a signal to.
My only concern is if between now and November, at one of our workshops, we hear from the public that there are a lot of cultivators that are interested in this, or we hear from more, say, lab testing facilities, manufacturers, cultivators, that they are really excited, but sorry, we didn't put the wording in for you, well, I guess we could consider them for the following year, or at any point.
Well, yeah, you could still bring that, I mean, we don't have to bring any of this to referendum, the council could, next, next time around, vote to move forward. I think the big piece of the referendum is, you know, do you want, the one that most people can understand is.
The most public thing is probably, yeah.
Most public, as opposed to the other ones, it might not be giving a great sample survey on that piece, and it doesn't preclude the council, confirm wrong, from, after this is authorized for retail, to consider regulations on all those fronts without having to go to referendum.
Yeah, we could, exactly.
Now, if it said, if they said no, you know, I think you might, as a council, want to consider some of the cultivation, the other pieces, but if they say yes, I think there's a good argument to be made to kind of consider that as a holistic referendum through workshops, et cetera, et cetera.
Agreed. To give us a, kind of a feel too, I mean, if it's a close, if it's a close vote, then you, we move forward pretty cautiously if you don't do anything, but if it's, if it's, if it's a broad span of yes and no, that'll just give us that, that feel for how we can move forward, so we don't need to go to referendum soon.
If medicinal, well, medicinal cannabis stores are already here, why are we having a referendum on it?
It's a very convoluted answer.
Just here to help.
So.
If only there was someone here that does this for a living.
I want to get to bed pretty soon.
So the state of Maine, you know, put out, again, the referendum on its own, whether or not to legalize cannabis in twenty sixteen, before their regulations, there may have been some people operating already, but, so twenty sixteen, that had passed anyway. And then you had, and that's, at that time, as soon as after it passed, municipalities automatically opted in and had to decide to opt out. And then somewhere along the line.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, they changed that, said you had to opt in instead, and you're automatically opted out. So in that timeframe, there was this opportunity for businesses to open, because their municipalities didn't do anything.
Right.
So they're opted in, they could have opened an operation, but then the state did consider that in twenty nineteen, they made a grandfathered definition and parameters for that, so then if you were grandfathered in, you didn't have to wait for your municipality to opt in. But so as far as like Kira Leaf goes.
That's the dispensary?
The dispensary, yes.
The medical dispensary.
The state passed a law allowing one dispensary for medical purposes within certain area, geographic areas or sectors, and for this area, it was like Hancock County, I think, a little bit more, Ellsworth was kind of cited for it, so in order to accommodate that, the city created performance standards to allow that one dispensary through the state law that provided for it, without actually opting in. So we have not opted in for any medical uses, we just have that one site based off of the state law that allowed it, and then we have a grandfathered operation.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And for clarity sake, a no vote on this referendum item would not affect those existing stores at all?
Correct.
And I wasn't going to talk, because this one was a bit of a, I think, confusing for that piece, right, which is if you're a voter, you go in there, and there's going to be notations on this, but you think you're asking for medical, but if you know anything in Ellsworth, you're like, well, there is, so that, you know, to me, there was potentially, if you wanted to just eliminate that and just have the vote on retail, because you kind of, even if this is a no vote, I think you have to, you have to figure out this regulatory piece on, you know, there's a discrepancy that need, the council needs to address, whether yes or no on medical. You know, so I'm not a hundred percent sure what we're trying to get. get out of the medical referendum.
It would allow for more. So we're, these, so, uh, the, any medical caregiver storefront, which I just, I thought there's only one, I guess there's two.
It's on Main Street.
It's on Main Street, and is there another one?
There's like another one up one A, technically, yeah.
Okay, so there's those two. They're grandfathered under the state law change. No matter what we do, as long as they continue to operate, the city can't take, can't say, no matter what the referendum says, they'd be grandfathered. Same for Keer Leaf dispensary. But if we opt, if we vote to opt in to allow for those businesses, other caregiver storefronts and dispensaries could open. So we could have multiple, we could have more, depending on where we want.
More medical dispensaries. But without the referendum, well, it would be up to the council.
Without the referendum, no more can open.
It's closed.
It's closed. They got, they kind of, they got their grandfathered in.
Well, unless you just took it upon your own authority as the council to add more through the regulatory process, like cultivation, like all the other things.
Yeah, if we wanted to. But as of right now, that, there, those are the only medical stores that can operate legally in Ellsworth, and to allow for more, we have to opt in.
Does consideration even further simplify and just have adult use recreational on the ballot, and similarly to the manufacturing, similarly to lab testing facilities, if we decided we wanted more medical, based on the voters?
Yeah, I, I, because I, I think it's confusing, because that was the one thing that, now that you've said that, I'm even a little more leery. I mean, because we have three, and so unless the, unless it's specifically stated, do you want more medical? People are gonna go, well, you're not gonna get a true answer, because they're gonna go like, we already have them. Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it cleaner, if you just put a referendum with the recreational use. Um, because right now, there are, it's not allowed to use anywhere in the city technically. There's an allowed use for the one dispensary that the state, um, law provided for. But on that, like in our table of uses, there are no allowed zones for medical marijuana uses. Um, and so I think it just makes it cleaner, kind of addressing that. But also, people feel very differently, I think, about medical uses and adult recreational. So if we just put adult recreational, it could be no, but if you put both, you might see a difference in outcome for what people vote for.
Could we change that wording though, to additional medical marijuana?
Or expands?
Yeah.
Then you're gonna be...
Somehow saying that there are...
Then that would be just three questions, because we don't, um, I mean, I guess we could do more for both, yeah. Never mind.
The thing is, you have it in your authority to, to do all, to me, the, the simplicity of just asking about recreational marijuana, which doesn't exist in Ellsworth now, keeps it to that. Um, and if you get a yes there, then you can, you can regulate the medical pieces and add more, redo the regulations to keep it where it is. When you add the medical as a second question, to me, now you're triggering, okay, well, there's already one here, oh wait, there's another, and then you're, you're in this like weird puzzle. You're gonna have to, we just did it at this council meeting, you're gonna have to read a book to understand really what you're voting on and how it triggers you, as opposed to just that rec question. You want recreational, um, yes or no? That's, that's intuitively understandable. The other pieces, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, um, expansion or just re, like clarifying the regulations on medical, all those, whether it's a yes or a no on, on recreational, are still within the council's authority.
I think that's cleaner. Honestly, we can, we can make a vote for medical and not have to wonder, um, and I do agree with you, medical, medical and recreational, you know, it's kind of like having, you know, prescription drugs that you get, you know, for an illness and then having prescription drugs, you know? And so I think it is two different kinds of, uh, it's two different questions. But I think if we get a feel, again, for the retail and the recreational, we'll have, you know, a better feel at, at the same time, we can make those decisions ourselves and have it, you know, be one question that people can understand. You can really educate better on one thing than you can, you know, deluding it into two. Maybe that is the way to go, is to have the one.
Works for me. Yeah, because if, if adult use passes, then it's fair for us to say medical, but, you know, can be also be, we can regulate it.
Another question from conversations earlier, by the time this comes up to vote, will there be, um, an understanding about what is anticipated for location, number, the results of all of these workshops, that that'll be available for the public to consider?
That, that was my hope, and even with the first preliminary meeting, uh, we started discussing what we thought, you know, would, would be best in town.
I wouldn't, right, I mean, if you're gonna present that to the public, I wouldn't say it, it's like any guarantee or any authority. It's more just like, maybe just presenting as the planning office would suggest this moving forward, but like, it's not binding or...
Right, but it at least shows that the intention is, is not the Wild West. I mean, you watch them in other parts of the state, and they're gonna put each other out of business because there are too many, and then you've got a different problem, so.
Not to...
I think putting the intention out there is valuable.
Not to really, well, we're all talking honestly openly here. Yeah, I, I was wondering if you should just put a single, um, if you'd like to open it. It got, to your point on to clarify that it's not gonna become Bangor, it's not gonna become here, to take it slow. Um, you know, I know we haven't necessarily gotten to really figure out what the complications of that, how the markets would work for, um, so yeah, that's, that's my more personal opinion. It's that we should have a single one here, that we should have the language to allow a single recreational store here, and then go from there. But, um, to, or we're gonna be in a public relations game, you know, to, you know, unless it's gonna, it's probably not gonna be printed in the ballot, because that's to be printed so soon, where we're gonna be trying to educate the entire public to come in to know that they're not, because it would be within your own authority if it's not expressed to add twenty-five here. Um, now, I know this council wouldn't do that, um, but I don't know if a voter would know that going into that booth, but now we're getting into, I don't know.
Yeah, but then if we do a single, and then two weeks later, like, all right, now there's twenty-five, like, you know, that's, we're kind of pulling the wool over their eyes, so to speak. I hear what you're saying. I think, I like the, I think the removing medical and just having adult use and just the retail use.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, people say, well, what if, what if, right? We don't have all the answers, but we can at least, that's what these workshops in theory are gonna be for. I'm sure we'll get excellent coverage in the local press about what we're talking about.
We've stayed the line.
Like we're all staring.
Yeah, and, uh...
And the really concerned people will probably show up and ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we can, they'll, they'll know that this isn't, yeah, it's, this council isn't...
Yeah, so I, I hear what you're saying, Charlie. It, it, there's definitely merit to it, but I think, I, I personally think we should just do the one use, engage with the public, and then that will, we'll get a sense of...
And the state's written, that's the same language that's been used outside.
The same, yeah, yeah. So I think for the motion, I think if the, I, I feel like the council right now, for everyone that spoke, says, why don't we just limit it to adult use, so we can just amend the motion here to just adult use. And then if we get a majority here tonight, we'll advance it to the warrant.
Move to place one warrant article on the November twenty twenty-four election ballot, asking, quote, shall the city of Ellsworth vote to authorize within the municipality the operation of adult use cannabis stores, provided they operate in compliance with all applicable state and local requirements, end quote.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilor Allen?
I like the idea of a referendum to let the citizens of Ellsworth speak, or vote to speak. I think it's, uh, something that we haven't done a lot of since I've been here, but I really like the idea of putting it out there and letting the people of Ellsworth, in, in my words, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth, decide how to press forward.
Agreed. Now, it's on us to get the information out, so they have as much information as possible before the ballot.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this. I like the way this, this has landed tonight.
Me too. Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for all your work, everyone. Item twenty-three, German.
I am in support.
Can I make one out of turn comment?
Sure.
Actually, it's not a comment, it's just, uh, an observation. Um, Nolton Park seems to be quite a hot topic amongst citizenry town, and I think you really ought to have the up-to-date information. Um, the price to fix the playground is not accurate. That guess that's going around six to eight thousand dollars. That was the labor price only, um, based on CN, CJ, CJN Construction, the Game Time representative that did the, uh, did the, uh, inspections. Um, I've got an email out, I've spoke to MRC Corporation, which is the, uh, parent corporation of Game Time. They have the materials list. I'm waiting for, um, a price to get back on materials. I'm talking with Chad White, who is the inspector, based on his twenty-six years of working with Game Time. He's thinking somewhere in a ballpark of fifteen thousand dollars for materials, the parts needed to repair the playground. Um, so I'm working on it. Um, it's not like we're, we're avoiding it. And, and Chad is not, he's, he's booking like a year out. Although I did convince him to come back, and if we okay the price of all of the repair equipment, to come back and replace the slide, and the, uh, one of the, the bridges is a, a big safety hazard, because it's stretched so far. Some of the smaller things, um, I'm gonna do, which are really just non-critical, but they're a maintenance item that he noted that I was unaware of. Um, so we are working on it, and the splash pad's been pressure washed twice this year already. I've pressure washed it just two weeks ago, so. It's not, the, the pad itself is not slippery. There's areas on the outside that, as time permits, I get to it. I don't know where the lady that emailed you said her kid fell, but, um, the pad itself has been completely washed. And as far as the bathrooms go, those are cleaned seven days a week. My opinion, parent supervision of their children using the bathrooms as a playground is lacking. Um, the bathrooms get cleaned at six-thirty every morning by the contractor. I go up there at noon time, and a lot of times it's trashed, and kids are just running in and out of there, throwing water, and, you know. It's parent supervision, I mean, parents need to take some responsibility up there as well. That's all. But I wanted you to have the accurate information, because...
Thank you, that's, that's, that's great, thank you.
People are pretty, pretty excited about it, and, you know, they're gonna be contacting you folks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, John and I talked a bit about this, and, you know, there's some, that reserve funding for Nolton, for the zoo playground, as we get reconciled, as we revisit that. Um, obviously, if there's any very pressing safety concerns, Jim's gonna get to it.
As parent supervision goes, I can show you pictures of our last complaint of, of seeing graffiti on the splash pad, not in chalk. Where are the parents while the kids are drawing this?
Card.
Life, bigger than life size.
Since he was in chalk.
And with that, we reached a point in the meeting.
Okay.
So...
Are we ready to adjourn? I think it's a good idea.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment? Thank you.